Welcome to the Spring City Council meeting. February 2nd, Groundhog's Day. I don't know about up in Ponchatanee, I've been there. And they can have all the weather they want, but it's gonna be spring pretty soon down here in Bonita. I saw a rabbit yesterday. Okay. I don't know about up in Ponchatanee, I've been there. And they can have all the weather they want, but it's gonna be spring pretty soon down here in Bonita. I saw a rabbit yesterday.
A little bit of playback.
I've been hearing my own voices here. Pastor Randley Crandall, please give an invocation to us, give us some inspiration. Ask God to help us. Please rise.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment if I could just to thank the council though for continuing to honor the tradition and the heritage that we have of having an invocation beforehand. So I appreciate that. So let's go to the prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you tonight as we come in this meeting that your hand is upon each and every one of us here. And I thank you, Lord, for the privilege that we have and the freedom that we have of even being able to come together like this and having a meeting. So, Lord, give the council wisdom, direction, discernment, and understanding that everything that they do tonight will be done according to the way that you would have it to be done to make the right decisions. So, Lord, I thank you for peace, the peace that surpasses all understanding that we'll come into this place and be with each person as they come. For we just give this all to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. John Dahmer, can you lead us in the pledge, please? Where's John? There he is. His microphone's all messed up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any justice for all.
Okay, Debbie, we're all here, but you can call our names.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Present.
Councilman Purdon.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Present.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilman Corey.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Okay. Agenda. Attorney, would you tell us?
Do we have any requests to change anything on the agenda?
Nope.
Speak on number eight, A, B, or nine, I mean.
Did you want to give your mayors welcome first, sir?
Mayors welcome. You want to do the mayors welcome.
Yeah, well, I guess. They want to hear what's going on. Yes. There you go. Okay, we have a little technical difficulty here. And folks, I'm glad you're all here, this is the American way. This is your house. I'm just here for a short period of time. There'll be somebody else here to lead us in the future forever and ever. So, thanks for coming. If you haven't filled out a speaker's form, please have one available so that Debbie can keep us in order. I don't know how many people are going to speak tonight. They're out in the lobby.
The next item is public comment on items on the agenda for the members of the public who are here in attendance. If you are here for either one of the two land use items, the two rezonings that are here for tonight, I would ask that you hold your comments until those items are called separately. If you are here for one of the other remaining items on the consent agenda, now would be an opportunity to come up. We have four minutes to speak. Seeing none, what I will ask is that we're about to go into public hearings for two rezoning cases tonight. If you have an opportunity, go into the back, get a comment card, fill out your name, it'll make it go a little bit smoother, and hand it to the clerk here at the end of the dais. That will allow us to make sure that we call you up when the public hearing portion of those two hearings move forward. Now, I want to let say, lay a couple of ground rules. If you intend to speak, whether you are in support of a petition, against petition, just came to watch, but you may feel the urge to come up and speak, what I'm going to ask is in a moment, I'm going to swear everyone in for both petitions, just so we have that on the record, that your testimony can be considered. The other issue that I want to address tonight, based on some prior comments for both petitions, is the future of these two projects. There are a lot of elements to both projects that are going to be coming back in the future, either future phases, or they are going to be elements of development level review. When the staff comes up at the beginning of each hearing, staff will give a brief introduction, then they will turn it over to the applicant who will make a presentation. The applicant has the burden to show that they meet the city's adopted rezoning criteria and deviation criteria. After that, staff will give their presentation. As they give their presentation, they will identify, if the applicant hasn't, the various standards and criteria upon which the council as a whole is sitting as essentially the judge on. If those criteria are found to be met, then the project is eligible to be approved. When you are speaking your comments, you may have come with ideas or concerns. Be very cognizant that those are the issues that will get laid out during those presentations that are relevant for the consideration. And so, if you can, tailor your comments so that they address those issues. But some of the issues that are more ethereal, that are future projects, I may address them if they come up, they're not necessarily relevant for this petition. So I just want to make sure that's clear so everyone understands what is happening, and you'll see it in the applicant's, in the staff report, as they walk through what those standards are. And so, make sure you're paying attention to that, particularly those who may have prepared comments, what the relevant issues are for consideration. And with that, I'll ask that anyone, including anyone in the hallway that intends to give testimony tonight, to stand, raise the right hand, and swear affirm, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. And if you didn't, if you didn't swear this time, and you do feel the urge, please come up, and I mean swear in the positive way, please come up at the time that you're ready to speak and indicate that you haven't been sworn, and I'll swear you in at that time. So, moving forward to the first hearing tonight.
Thank you very much.
Is the second reading and public hearing of zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, considering a quest to rezone approximately 113 plus or minus acres from RS1 and RM2 to a residential plan development, RPD, for a maximum of 350 dwelling units pursuant to Division 43 of Chapter 4 of the city of Bonita Springs Land Development Code located 14-47-25-B1-1400A.0000 That, I'm sorry, 23-47-25-B1-01400.08060 and 23-47-25-B1-0050A.0000. And 23-47-25-B1-00500.0040, Bonita Springs, Florida, zip code 34135, providing for an effective date. Now you know why I took it out.
Very good.
Good evening, City Council. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the Record. Just to give you a brief introduction before the applicant begins their presentation, as the title block suggests, this is a rezoning request to a residential plan development. The request is a requirement in your golf course redevelopment code that they rezone to a residential plan development. That is the purpose of the application, for a maximum of 350 dwelling units to be single family and two-family attached. This case was heard by the zoning board in January 11th of this year, and it was approved by a vote of five to two. It came before you with first reading on the 19th, and it was approved to move to this hearing six to one. So that's what brings us here today. And with that, we have the applicant and Grady Minor and their team going first.
Thanks, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Wayne Arnold. I'm a certified planner with Q Grady Minor and Associates here in Bonita Springs. I'm representing the Barron Collier Companies in this rezoning of property that they have acquired. And I think you know most of the players on our team, but I will introduce them. So tonight, we have Nick Casalenguado, I'm sorry, the Senior Vice President, and Austin Howe, both from Barron Collier Companies. Neil Montgomery, as you know, is our land use counsel. Dan Waters, professional engineer. I'm sure if you saw the zoning board hearing, you heard Dan give a lot of presentation, and he will again tonight go through some details of the water management system and buffering for the project. Bruce Lehman's our ecologist. He's not here tonight, but there really don't appear to be ecological issues. And Norm Tribelcock with Tribelcock Consulting Services is here tonight and has prepared our traffic analysis and is here to answer questions. So what I intend to do is, let me give you a quick overview of what we have in store for our presentation. I'm going to go through a brief presentation of our request, talk a little bit about the planning and zoning considerations, discuss the master plan with you. I'm going to turn that over to Nick Casalenguado. Nick's going to talk about how our plan has evolved over time as we've coordinated with your staff. We're going to talk about our master plan evolution, the drainage study participation. We're going to go through a very detailed description of those drainage improvements and buffer enhancements, and then we're going to talk about our deviations and then our findings for approval to demonstrate how we've complied with your land development code and comprehensive plan. So one of the important parts of what we feel about this project is there's been a lot of public meetings and coordination with the community, more so than just your required pre-submitting information meeting and your post-sufficiency informational meeting. We started this back in September of 2020, and here we are today in 2022, seeking your approval. But we've had the two neighborhood meetings, we've had our zoning board meeting, we've had our first reading with you, we've met multiple times with your city staff and your consultant team. We have dealt with the lot 86s, it's been termed at the roundabout entrance into the northern parcel, to talk about removing a restriction and have been successful in doing so. So, other community engagement, the Bonita Golf Steering Committee, there have been numerous meetings with them over the past year and a half, and those have been very positive meetings. We've met with different condo associations, including the Greens of Bonita Springs, Bonita Golf Course Civic Association, Bonita Lakes. We offered to meet with them, we knew they had some concerns about the northern buffer, and they declined our offer to meet with them. But we have tried, and we've met also with the neighbors abutting lot 86 and had positive conversations. We've also met with Ms. Ogil on Carnoustie Court. And so we feel like we've had good community outreach. Have we made everybody happy? Probably not, but we have certainly tried to express what we intend to do, how we intend to do it, and we think we've got a very high-quality project. And I'm sure you know the reputation of Barron Collier Companies, a 100-year-plus company, and they tend to have their names on extremely high-quality projects, and I'm proud to represent them. So I think we are all aware of where the property is located, but it's pretty central to Bonita Springs. You can see it highlighted in yellow here, vicinity map, so it's just west of I-75, just east of Old 41, and obviously it's north of Shangri-La. It's a little closer image showing you the defunct golf course property on the right, and you can see that it's just today, a underutilized piece of property, but it's about 113 acres, and it's split between the two parcels, we call it the north and south parcel, both about 56 point something acres. So, the northern parcel is actually zoned already for a single-family development, RS1, and the southern parcel is zoned for both single-family and multifamily. However, as Mr. Fegan pointed out, your golf course requirements in the land development code require that we rezone all property to a planned development in order to redevelop a golf course. So, that is one of the purposes of the planned development, but also just for a project of this scope and size, it makes a lot of sense to have a master plan, and there's a lot of moving parts that you can only tell that story really through this planned development rezoning process. So again, we're seeking a rezoning from that RM2, RM1 to a planned development, and as has been mentioned, we originally started this request with 500 units, both multifamily and single-family, and we've modified the request to be 350 single-family or two-family attached units. So those are both single-family dwelling unit types under your code. So our request has been dropped by 150 units and only single-family. And you'll hear shortly, we also made a commitment at the zoning board that certain areas of the project would only be limited to single-story, single-family homes. So, another commitment that we think is a significant indication that we're trying to do the right thing and be good neighbors to everybody. The density calculations that we're required to do under your planned development standards say that we could qualify to seek up to 615 dwelling units. So we started at 500, substantially below the maximum, and here we are today, seeking 350 units, and we've removed the multifamily residential request. So, pretty significant reduction in density and certainly far less than your code would allow us to seek. The master plan, I've got the northern portion highlighted in green, the southern portion in orange. This isn't the most legible copy, but it's really just to identify that the north is the currently zoned for single-family today, the south is zoned for single-family and multifamily, and you can kind of see the size and orientation there. The master plan, north is to your left, so the northern parcel is on the left side of the screen. And I'll just point out a few of the key features here of the project, so, just so everybody's got orientation, Shangri-La is going to be down here, we have Paradise Road here, this is Cockle Shell, and our access points are both off of Paradise. The southern access point to the southern parcel is here, aligned closely with Martin Street. And then the northern parcel is at lot 86, which also becomes a relocated Maddox. So Maddox comes straight across today. We would propose to relocate it, put in a roundabout at that location, so it does not only provide access to the northern parcel, but it provides a traffic calming feature that the neighbors, as we talked to them, told us that speeding traffic and the road was narrow and unsafe, we think that's a way to slow down the traffic. It also provides a couple of other benefits. It provides us the opportunity to provide a park site, because we also heard that residents had concerns over bus stop opportunities. So that would give a safe place for school bus stop and a small parklet for people. So, one of the other features, and we'll talk about it in a little more detail, it was regarding one of the buffer deviations, but your code does provide for deviations from the code. One of the things it talks about is providing a trail. So in this plan, we have taken a trail system and we're wrapping it on the south parcel, and it will connect over to Cockle Shell where the city has a sidewalk system. So we'll be providing a trail connectivity along the western side of the lake that's being proposed for the project. So again, the multi-use pathway is here, connecting to your project over here. And then the key features of the site, the shaded pattern, these are residential tracks, a very small amenity areas planned for the northern parcel, and then we have, the larger feature of the whole plan becomes lake system. This is on the north side, near Carnoustie. And then the lake system on the south is the most significant. It picks up larger lake system and significantly reduces the footprint of the development area on the south. That's one of the reasons, just as the lake system grew, the ability to fit units, especially after we made the commitment for single-family, just isn't there. So 350 is definitely pushing the limits of what we could construct there with this type Our schedule of uses, you can see here, the highlighted part of this is that we've eliminated multifamily and townhouse from the schedule of uses, so we're left with only single-family and two-family uses. And then, talking a little bit more about the city engagement, Nick, I think this would be a good time to turn it over to you and let you talk a little bit about the study area and how we've progressed with our planning.
Thank you, Wayne. I'd like to thank all the city councils for the time tonight. I know there's a lot to cover, so just want to go back to the last meeting and some of the comments we received from the city councils. I know, first, I want to thank Councilman Corey, you did, you had some concerns, and we hopefully will address them all tonight, at least be able to answer those questions. But to your credit and from our CEO, you recognize that we're reputable firm, we do the right thing, and I think that's important for us. Councilman Forbes, you had asked in one of your questions about committing to make sure that whatever we do is checked every year and monitored, and put a commitment on the record now that between us, the developer and the county staff, the city staff, we will do an annual review of both the drainage system and all the buffers that are proposed, and submit that to the city. So I want to put that on the record now as well, too. That was one of your requests, to make sure that it was up to the standard. So, talk a little bit about the history, because one of the things that Barron Collier does is, it goes out of its way to meet with the community. We just, anytime anybody wants to meet, usually me and myself and Austin will go out and sit with somebody, whether it's in their home or community meetings. Between Peter Panzeri, Ben Hirschenson, and some of the other community leaders, we've gone out repeated times. And so when you look at the progression of the project, when we first started out in the top right, we come in off Carnoustie Court. That was the only legal access we had. And we had a combination of both single-family and multifamily on the south side. We heard a lot about not coming in off Carnoustie Court, that that was very important to those residents that lived there. So we did a version that if we could acquire and relieve the declarative covenants on lot 86, we would be able to come in off of Paradise and not go there. So this is the progression of feedback that we're getting every time we go out. But we still had a mix of both single-family and multifamily on the south side. So then we heard that on the south side, they didn't want to see that mix, but, you know, when we came back with the multifamily plan, the unit count went up, and we weren't sure if we would be able to release lot 86. So we went back to access Carnoustie Court, well, you can see the numbers jumped to 591. When we re-presented that again in some of our meetings and talked to them, they were very against that, and we understood that. We started getting a little more comfortable because we acquired lot 86, and we started working with the residents, repeated meetings to talk about how do we get rid of that declarative covenant? By the way, that was recorded today in Lee County records. The community voted by a supermajority to relieve lot 86 of that restriction. So that basically said, the community said, "We don't want you coming in off Carnoustie, we want you coming off lot 86." And they took a vote, and it was released today, recorded. It was done in December, but recorded today. So that's important to note that that was done. At that same time this is going on, we were asked by the city to take a pause, because the analysis that Sing Hoffman was doing, they didn't know how much acreage. They were doing these various versions of it. They provided a report to the city. We said, "Well, obviously, the initial report that was provided would have been all of our property, and that wasn't going to work." So to Dan's credit, as a professional water management engineer, and to Robert Sing Hoffman, engineers do what they do. They recalculate, readjust, recalculate, readjust. We do what we do as the business end. We've got to go up to the third floor and sit with the financial people and explain what's going on, because it kept growing a lot. And so you'll see that as the progression continues. So they started looking at beyond, this is when Dan started looking at beyond the neighborhood even more than what he had already done. Remember, it's important to note that your code says equal to or better. Now, when better is considered, if we provide one more cubic box of water management storage or pass one more cubic foot per second, we've passed that threshold. What Sing Hoffman asked is significantly more than that. So we had already met that requirement, and now we're being told, okay, you know, in order to solve the area-wide drainage, you're going to have to really grow that water management system. So you can start to see the progression in the bottom left-hand side. That was one of our first reactions to the water management request. Well, as you can imagine, when we got a call from the city staff that said, "You know, we need more," we go, "Okay, how much more?" And for about a month and a half, they went through several versions of the project. And I'll tell you what, this is when we really, really struggled, because it was almost becoming not viable. And we had to make a decision internally whether we said, "I'm sorry, city staff, we've met the criteria in your zoning, but we cannot give you any more water management, because it's now making the project infeasible." And we've met the code criteria. On top of that, these next two changes really came about from public input. The original traffic statement said putting a turn lane at Paradise and Shangri-La. And it was actually one of the community members that said, "Would you consider relocating Maddox and putting your roundabout there?" And we said, "Okay, that's going to cost us about a million dollars." But at the end of the day, we said, "That does make sense. It really provides the traffic calming. We could spend close to a half a million dollars on a turn lane, but slowing the traffic down and providing a feature that's over there." And then they said, "What about a park?" And we said, "Well, we got some dead space there. You still have easements left where Maddox will be for some water sewer lines." And we said, "We can make that open space and park, and we're okay doing that." And we even talked to the school about potentially putting a bus stop there if they're willing to do that. That came into play. Well, as you can imagine, when we're doing that, there was a request for more drainage. So after we already promised to reduce the project, do these things, more drainage came in. And that's when, you know, I probably put myself at risk explaining to the powers that be at Barron Collier, "Why did you promise all this stuff and then only to be asked for more drainage?" This is where we are today. So when you look at this plan, you can see that even that little nub on the south side has been reduced, and predominantly, it is a water management development, a combination thereof. We've still kept our promise to do the roundabout, provide the park, and we've even been asked for that little gray piece in the top right-hand corner of the screen that's allowed for multifamily right now in your current zoning, that does not require coming in for a rezone. We can just submit a site development plan for that. They've asked us to put that aside to include that in the drainage calculation, and we would said we would do that. So when you look at the history of the project over the year, one thing we want to impress upon you is that we really went out of our way to listen to what the community asked for. That last few commitments came, which was, "We'll commit to single-story and enhance the buffer between the backyards in those areas," because that was a concern. So, I think we're at the point now, we've done everything possible, I give a lot of credit to Matt and Arlene that have, you know, worked with us to try and explain it to us, because there was some, a lot of grumbling when we got the last Sing Hoffman report. And if I'm incorrect, Matt, in saying that they've reviewed this and what we put on the record is accurate in terms of the amount of water management. So with that, I'd like to throw it to the water guy, Dan Waters, because he's going to go into a lot of detail of what this project does.
I think Matt was going to confirm, though.
I'm sorry?
What you see there is what our engineering.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Waters.
Thank you, Nick, for, just by way of introduction, and for the record, my name's Dan Waters, professional engineer. I've worked in this area for just under 23 years. Prior to working at Peninsula Engineering, I worked for South Florida Water Management District and ran the regulatory program in the Fort Myers office, which was in charge of permitting for Lee Collier and portions of Charlotte and Hendrick County. So I'm going to talk tonight about water management and drainage, obviously, which is a big topic. Going to talk about the proposed roadway system within the project, a little more detail on the pedestrian network that Wayne touched on, talk about the grading that is proposed on the edge conditions at the perimeter of the property, where existing homes are up against the proposed development, and then finally, talk about our conceptual landscape plan. So, as Nick mentioned, or Wayne mentioned, I'm sorry, it's been over a year since we had our initial neighborhood information meeting. And one of the things that was impressed upon us in that meeting was the scope and severity of the water management problems out in this area. So one of the first things we did after coming out of that neighborhood information meeting was start to try and understand why these problems exist. So to do that, we looked into the permit history for the golf course, which was permitted originally in March of 1980, and tried to get an understanding of why it wasn't working. So, we'll look here in a second at a map that shows the original permit plans for the golf course on an aerial. But a couple of things to note. One is, the golf course property provides some stormwater storage for surrounding developments, some of them have their own ponds. It also, though, for the surrounding developments, we'll show you in a second, they all outfall into the golf course, and conveyance across the golf course to the outlet at the southwestern corner of the south golf course parcel is required for those communities to drain to Spring Creek, and that is one of the big problems. Couple other things that we noted are, and you see it in something this old, we've learned a lot since 1980 in terms of how to do these things. There is a lot that was included in this original design and the way this was planned that you would not do today, and working with Sing Hoffman and incorporating their design needs into our project, it helps us to resolve some of those old longstanding issues. One of which is, the golf course was permitted to have a manually operated stormwater pump at the southwest corner of the golf course property. And I'm going to go ahead to the next slide, and I'll show you where that is. So the stormwater pump that is, was permitted, sits right there off of Cockle Shell Drive, southwest corner of the south golf course parcel. It's manually operated. That is not something that you would get approved today to go in and do if you were starting this thing from scratch. Other thing that I want to note on here, and again, this is the original golf course plan from 1980 overlaid on an aerial, so you'll see Shangri-La Road is down here on the left side of the screen. Paradise Road bisects the two golf course parcels, and then Cockle Shell Drive is here on the west side of the golf course project. So, one thing to note is, the areas that are shaded in this are the areas that currently discharge into the golf course and were originally master-planned to discharge into the golf course. So in terms of what the minimum code requirements would be, it would be to maintain the level of service in these areas and not make of service in these areas and not make things any worse. Don't necessarily have to make it better, but don't make it any worse if you're doing the minimum of the code. The Sing Hoffman plan that we have adjusted our land plan to basically incorporate the water management needs identified, and Sing Hoffman's design serves areas that are much greater expanse in terms of geographic areas than what you see here shaded on the screen, and goes beyond just "don't make things worse," but actually making significant improvements in areas. And so one of the things we noted when we started to look through the permit history on this is just, this has had problems right from the get-go. And so this is all just from one permit file in one community. This is nineteen seventy-nine, the Water Management District suing the, this is all from Benita Golf Villas only, not any of the other surrounding areas that have drainage issues. Nineteen seventy-nine, the Water Management District suing the developer of Benita Golf Villas, telling them to stop work, you don't have a permitted design. Again, nineteen seventy-nine, you probably can't read that, but on the bottom, it says, "Based on the flooding that they were seeing out there during construction, they cannot stress enough how much there is a need for a sound water management design on this project." Nineteen eighty-five, more complaints of flooding. Nineteen eighty-five, a resident that lives in Benita Golf Villas that says he's been asking for help for four years and not getting it. Nineteen ninety-four, residents complaining about flooding, saying if the right storm comes, everybody's going to drown. Two thousand and three, a resident saying, "We flooded in ninety-five. We flooded again. Since nineteen ninety, we need help." Two thousand and four, the city basically going to the Water Management District saying, "We have issues here." This doesn't even include Hurricane Irma. So there is a long, long history of problems in this area. So, you know, then we get into, why is this not working? And the reason it's not working is primarily that the facilities, a lot of them weren't planned, you know, the way we would do it today, and then they've also reached the end of their useful life. Again, I want to point out, all of those surrounding communities that were shown in the plan we had earlier have to have the runoff from their development get conveyed to that location where the pump station is on the southwest corner of the South Golf Course parcel. And so what you see out there when you walk around and take a look at it is the conveyance facilities are failing, number one. On the right, you see one of the metal culverts that was installed. These things are forty years old. What happens to them is they rust, and so the walls basically just disintegrate. You have dirt. Fill those pipes in, and then everything behind that that has to drain through it to get to that outlet can't get there. It's blocked. A lot of the ditches at the perimeter of the golf course property are shallow. They hold water in the summer. They're fantastic places to grow weeds, which inhibits flow, and so flow does not go really well from the upstream areas to the pump station. Where that really shows itself is a situation like we had in Hurricane Irma. Hurricane Irma, I think everybody on the council was around during that. We had a very bad storm called Invest ninety-two L about ten days or two weeks before Irma, dumped a bunch of rain on us, raised stages in all of these areas. When you have failing conveyances like this, that water never recovers. It never gets back down. And so when you have a second storm come in, like we did with Irma, and dump a bunch more water, that initial water elevation is higher at the start. That water has nowhere to store or nowhere to go, but on the roads, in people's yards, and potentially in people's houses. So now we'll start to talk about what is the Sing Hoffman plan and, you know, how does it help the surrounding areas? So first off, we would bring this up to modern standards. One of the big features would be, get rid of all these failing conveyances, replace them with conveyances that are more durable, so either concrete or heavy-duty plastic pipes. Additionally, place these pipes in areas where you can get to them and maintain them and clean them. Additionally, get rid of all these shallow ditches that just grow weeds that are hard to maintain, and replace those with instead shallow swales that'll be dry in the summer. You can then mow those, keep the weeds out, and basically run drainage through those swales to the inlets and the culvert system. Another thing that you will notice in the Sing Hoffman plan is, as opposed to the original...
Excuse me one second?
Yes, sir.
The pointer doesn't show up online when people are watching?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that controller has one in there.
Gotcha. I apologize. Yeah. So it's a... Oh. Okay. So you can see on the south parcel here, large contiguous lake areas, these are not going to be susceptible to clogging. So if we can get water through culverts to these large lake areas, we have a good outlet to the proposed outfall, which will be, again, to a headwater ditch at Spring Creek, which will be right down here. This will be a gravity-fed system, so it's not something that relies on a pump or relies on somebody to go flip a pump on. Basically, the proposed plan is to get the water to these lakes and let them flow out. Additionally, currently, there is no easements or any rights for surrounding neighbors to access the golf course property to come in and make any repairs that are necessary. So what would happen as a part of this would be, there'd be easements granted to the city that would allow, and this will all depend on future developer agreements, but the form that it takes, but would allow for the city to have maintenance rights to come in here, and basically, third parties that are around the golf course property would not depend on somebody else to come in and maintain that system. So just a little bit of detail now on the Sing Hoffman plan. So I'm going to start here with this area called Paradise Acres. And so this is on the east side of Paradise Road. You can see on the bottom of the screen here, Shangri-La is here. And so this is an area that, if you remember the map we showed originally, which was the original permit plan for the golf course, this area does not currently drain into the golf course, was not designed to go that way. In the Sing Hoffman plan, there are a number of locations along Paradise where we would have thirty-inch culverts. That would basically provide the ability to drain the water from the east side of Paradise Road into this proposed lake system, again, to the outfall down here on the southwest corner of the Southern Golf Course parcel. Currently, these areas, this area that's shown in blue, has to discharge to the south, down Paradise Road and get to Shangri-La. And you've got a number of driveway culverts, a lot of them very small, and so basically, it's just a bunch of culverts in series, basically, almost in a single-file line. And if one of them gets clogged, you have debris and swales on Paradise that block flow. Everybody behind that gets impacted. So this will be a benefit, not only the storage that would be provided on the golf course, but the ability to convey water out of these neighborhoods to where it needs to be. The second area that I'm going to highlight here is Benita Golf Villas. That was the community that had the long history of complaints that we went through before. So what is proposed would be a series of pipes on the south property line that would vary between forty-two and sixty inches, and would convey that runoff into the proposed lake system on the west side of Paradise Road. There are also additionally points of connection where currently, these neighborhoods flow into the golf course. We would provide connection to those and route that, obviously, through this proposed system. One thing I will point out that is in the Sing Hoffman plan that I'm really not highlighting here is, there's additional pipe installation within Benita Golf Villas to connect from, basically, the proposed system that would be on the golf course site to their proposed lake to really complete the project. Another area I want to highlight, much like Benita Golf Villas, this is Benita Springs Country Club and Fairway Estates. These were areas that were always designed and permitted to discharge into the golf course. So you'd have a combination of culverts that would pick up the drainage from, this is Fairway Estates from Wild Turkey Drive, I believe it is, a twenty-four-inch pipe that would take that into this long contiguous lake that is along Carnoustie Court. And then that would feed into a combination of forty-eight and sixty-inch reinforced concrete pipes that would get to that big lake on the Southern Golf Course parcel. And then additionally, another pond that would be on this golf course parcel would outfall through forty-eight and sixty-inch pipes. Those actually combine with the runoff from Benita Golf Villas, which comes down this property line. It would go into this sixty-inch pipe and go into the large lake on the South Golf Course parcel. The final one that I'm going to provide some detailed information is for Paradise Woods, Fair Winds, and the South Winds neighborhoods. Those are on the west side of Paradise Road, north of the Southern Golf Course parcel. Similar to Paradise Acres, these are areas that currently are not permitted, not designed to go into the golf course water management system. The Sing Hoffman plan would propose to install a series of culverts along the west side of Paradise Road between eighteen and twenty-four inches, pick up the drainage that comes out of those neighborhoods, and pipe it into that southern, the large lake on the Southern Golf Course parcel. So those are locations where there's some pipework required to get that water to the golf course. That's not everything. There are a number of other locations that basically directly outfall into either ditches or lakes on the golf course that we've shown in the arrows here, that basically would be connections directly into lakes now as opposed to what they were before, which is the ditch system. So what this provides you here is basically just a snapshot that all of these areas, and in kind of culmination of this Sing Hoffman design, all the areas that you see here in the crosshatch in the red boundary, including, I want to point out, the old maintenance facility site here, basically, the concept plan that is before you today that we are requesting approval for, development has been pulled out of those areas, and they have been set aside for water management to provide the benefits that are identified in the Sing Hoffman plan. So I'm going to briefly talk about what the roadways interior to the project look like. Fairly typical private roadway cross-section, two ten-foot travel lanes, a fifty-foot private right-of-way. This would be maintained by the homeowners association of this community. They would not be publicly maintained or city-maintained streets. We'll have a six-foot concrete sidewalk on each side of the road, and then where we do not have conflicts with utility installation, we would propose to plant street trees along the street in those areas to provide shading of those walkways. Wayne touched on this before. This is our proposed pathway system. One of the things that we heard in the first neighborhood information meeting we had was that the pedestrian experience on either Paradise Road or Cockle Shell Drive is not a pleasant one. You've got sidewalks that are maybe two or three feet off the edge of pavement. There's no curb on those roads, and so there's very little protection or feeling of protection for a pedestrian that's walking there. So one of the things that we have proposed is essentially to take the roundabout on relocated Maddox at Paradise Road and kind of make that the hub of our pedestrian system. The six-foot concrete sidewalks we talked about internal to the development before would tie in here. We would have six-foot sidewalks on either side of Maddox, and also extend up Paradise to the existing pathways there. And then on the west side of the lake that is planned, on the Southern Golf Course parcel, have an eight-foot pathway. So this is off the roadway system and a much more relaxing or pleasant walk as compared to having cars flying past you at two or three feet away. And this eight-foot pathway system would connect to a pathway on Cockle Shell Drive, and then ultimately connect to a pathway the city is going to be constructing in the very near future that will extend down Cockle Shell Drive down to Shangri-La. There are locations within the project that we have, the developer has committed to putting fences or walls in. Other locations where the developer would like to have the right to do it, depending on what the final plan looks like, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute, but I'm going to go through these real briefly. We have, on the South Golf Course parcel adjacent to Benita Pines Club, that's a location where we've said that would be a mandatory fence and wall, and that's an attempt to shield headlights from cars on that roadway from going into Benita Pines. Also, locations along these homes that back up to the golf course on Carnoustie, and then along Divot Drive, where the proposed buffer is twenty-five feet. We would say that's a location where it's going to be a mandatory fence or wall the developer will install. And I want to, this was something that came up in the planning board meeting that I want to talk about is, we heard differing opinions on what people want to see in a fence or wall. So what we want to do is keep the option open, work with the city staff, talk to the community more. Some people want chain link that is rubberized. Other people, the white vinyl kind of fence that is completely solid. Other folks prefer a composite wall that is sort of an epoxy in concrete. So the important thing is that it'll be six feet in height, and we would like to work more with city staff and surrounding residents when we get to final development order permitting to identify what material that is exactly. There are locations, and you can see them here on the, I'll go on the north parcel first, on the north side of the North Golf Course parcel here, and then on the south side of the North Golf Course parcel up against Wood Ibis, where we would like to have the option for the developer to put the fence or wall in once we get to final plans and we see what that area looks like. These are areas with fifty-foot buffers. And then likewise, on the South Golf Course parcel, in areas where we've got a fifty-foot buffer up against Fenner Circle and some of these other areas where, when we get to a final planting plan and a final grading plan, we can identify whether we think there's a need for the fence or wall or not. So now I'm going to go through cross-sections, and in a second, for a couple of these, I'll provide some line of sight exhibits and some colorized renderings of what this would look like. So what you'll see here is, on the right side of the screen, you'll see the location where these cross-sections would apply. So you can see Section A here is circled in orange, and so you see the locations where this section would apply here on the map. On the bottom is the buffer up against Benita Lakes, which is circled in green down there. On the bottom of the screen, circled in green on the map here. So to first start with, and again, we'll have a color rendering of these in a moment, but the buffer areas in Cross Section A would be a twenty-five-foot buffer between the golf course property line, which is shown here in red, and the proposed property line of the new homes here. So this is twenty-five feet. What we would do is push the wall that we just talked about, or fence, away from the existing homes, which are over here, and then provide landscaping between the existing homes and that wall. We'd have a swale in these rear yard areas to catch the surface runoff from those rear yards that would be piped to the lakes, and then likewise, a swale in the rear yard of the proposed homes. In the case of the buffer at Benita Lakes, the existing homes, again, over here on the right, proposed homes on the left, the buffer area here is fifteen feet. There's an existing native vegetation area preserve on Benita Lakes that sits here that is a minimum of thirty-five feet in width, and then a twenty-five-foot buffer tract or open-space tract on Benita Lakes. So basically, the distance between the property line on the rear of the homes in Benita Lakes and the property line, not even structure to structure, property line to property line, would be sixty-five feet between those two uses in this plan. So to get to something that provides you a kind of line of sight of what this would look like, we'll start in the twenty-five-foot buffers along, these would be the areas along Carnoustie here, and along Divot Drive where the homes back up to the golf course. You can see, again, twenty-five-foot buffer from the property line to the property line of the proposed homes. The wall would be here, and then the landscaping would be between the property line and the wall. wall. And so, what that would look like if you're standing in the backyard of one of the existing homes and looking towards the buffer, it would be this. We'll talk in a little more detail on this momentarily, but the proposal is trees twenty feet on center and a hedge that would be maintained at five foot in height in front of that, in front of that wall. Similar line of sight study between Benita Lakes and the proposed project, again, it'd be sixty-five feet between the property line of the new homes and the property line of the existing residences in Benita Lakes, and you've got proposed planting that we'll go into more detail about here momentarily. That would be in this fifteen-foot buffer area, plus the thirty-five-foot native vegetation, minimum native vegetation preserve, plus the open space tract on the Benita Lakes site with the hedge. So, jumping into, I'll move more quickly through these other ones because I think the ones we just did were the ones of most interest. In the areas where we've got a fifty-foot buffer, which would be down here along Benita Golf Villas, and on the north end of the site up against Wild Turkey, we've got two alternatives. What you see is Alternative One is what the city's consultant, Singh Hoffen's, design looked like. What you see on the bottom is Alternative Two, which is what we originally proposed, both fifty feet, both allow for planting. Really, the difference is, the one on the bottom there would allow for a four-foot-tall berm and a little more screening between the two uses. You can see, just with the amount of lake on this site, you see how many places these circles in this edge condition happen. So, there's basically two edge conditions with lakes. The ones in orange, which is the vast majority, is basically fifteen feet flat at the top of bank that would be sodded, no vegetation, would allow for surface drainage off of the existing homes into the lake system, and then a four-to-one slope down to the edge of water of the proposed lake. On the bottom, the section with the green circle, that basically represents the location of the pathway that runs along the west side of the lake on the South Golf Course parcel. And so, what that includes is, again, eight-foot multi-use path that would be here at the top of bank, and then shade trees every fifty feet to shade the path, and then a four-to-one slope down to the bottom, or to the edge of water. On, not going to spend a lot of time on this, on Cockle Shell Drive, just basically a lake with a small berm and the eight-foot path that we're proposing within the right-of-way on Cockle Shell that'll connect to the city's new path. This is on Fenner Circle, similar to what we saw earlier in Section C. We've got a fifty-foot buffer, so we will have to choose whether we go with Alternative One, which is the Singh Hoffen design, or Alternative Two. We want to leave both options open as we work through the final design, Singh Hoffen. Section H is up against Benita Pines Club, very similar, again, a fifty-foot buffer. The only difference that you'll see here between what we've already talked about is, on the top, this is the Singh Hoffen design. There's an existing ditch in that area that Singh Hoffen has proposed to keep in place. If we were to connect some of that area with pipes, then that would free up some room for us, and we could do, again, the four-foot-tall berm that we could plant on and help further shield some of those areas from headlights. Sections I and J, which I think are the final two, very similar to what you saw before. This is near Cypress Plantation, eight-foot path on top of the berm, shade trees, and then Section J is up against Benita Pines Club. Again, the Singh Hoffen design keeps that existing ditch in place, and there'd be a berm between that existing ditch and the proposed lake. So, final two slides I have before I turn it back over to Wayne is to talk about the landscape plan conceptually. So, what you'll see here, the areas at the perimeter of the site that are shown in blue are areas where the buffer is less than fifty feet. So, those are areas that we would intend to plant more densely to provide buffering. So, the proposal is trees at a twenty-foot spacing, and then a hedge that we will maintain at a five-foot minimum height. The areas that are hatched in green, where homes are up against existing homes, would be thirty-foot spacing on trees, ten-foot minimum height of the trees at the time of planting, and then a hedge maintained at five-foot height. One of the things Nick alluded to earlier that's included in this is locations where existing homes are immediately adjacent to the golf course, and the buffer is twenty-five feet. Proposed to limit those to a single-story home in those areas. And then, this is my final slide before Wayne comes back up. This is the South Golf Course parcel. Again, most of this is lakes, and the areas that, where lake will be against existing residential, we would not propose to plant or buffer anything, wouldn't want to break up those views. So, the areas where we have proposed development up against existing residential, trees at thirty-foot spacing, five-foot hedge in those areas. So, Wayne is going to come back up, and then obviously, I can answer any questions that you have once we're through with the presentation.
Thanks, Dan. So, I'm going to wrap up by going through some of our deviations. Mr. Fegan did a really good job in your staff report talking about each of our requested deviations, which we believe are essential and make our project a better project. But you do have criteria for deviations in your code. You actually have section in your code that pertains to normal deviations. You also have deviation discussion in your golf course conversion section, and the criteria are slightly different, but nonetheless, I think the bottom line is they're meant to be, deal with the deviations from your code when they can enhance the project and not harm the public. I mean, those are really the general standards of what they're about. And in our particular case, we think that the deviations we requested have significant enhancements to the PD that we're requesting. In hand with the reduction in numbers of units, we've limited our development footprint in order to provide for some additional drainage facilities. We provided the commitment to construct a roundabout and Maddox realignment for traffic calming. We can accommodate school bus pickup location there. We can create a multi-use path system and a park area if these deviations are approved. So, we think they're all important, and staff has done a good job of analyzing those. We withdrew a couple of our deviations, a couple of those deviations staff recommended denial, and we're okay with those. And I think one of those, I hope Mr. Fegan will, when I get to it, I'll talk about it in more detail, but I think Mr. Fegan's going to offer up a revised condition relative to the deviation. So, I'm not going to go through all of these in detail because some of those really go back and look at the standards that Mr. Waters just walked you through. Staff recommended denial on these two deviations. One was an entrance gate, and we're okay with eliminating the entrance gate. Deviation number two, actually, it's a two-part deviation, and he recommended denial of one part, and the second part, it was subject to dealing with the fence issue that Mr. Waters mentioned that we would work out at the time of development order approval. And we're okay with that. We'd like a little more certainty, but we understand that that's fluid and the water management design's not complete, so we will work with the city manager and staff on that when we get to it. Going to jump ahead to deviation number five. This is the one where, dealing with complete streets and dealing with dimensional standards required for maintained streets, and staff recommended that we withdraw, and we agreed to that as well as the next deviation. So, those were not problems for us. Deviation seven, if you listened to the zoning board hearing and you heard the public comments last time, there was a lot of discussion about deviation seven, and that is the request to deviate from the fifty-foot buffer standard that's in your code. In fact, your code does allow for the deviation, and it says where you deviate from this fifty-foot buffer, you should provide a twelve-foot wide pathway. We've offered an eight-foot pathway in lieu of that because that makes sense. We can make that work with the water management design. We think it's provided in a very functional location that can link Maddox up with, all the way down to Shangri-La when the city completes its piece of the sidewalk system. So, we believe that's a betterment. We also think, hand in hand with that deviation, you know, it's the unknown. When this was written a couple of years ago, you really didn't know what was going to happen with the golf course. And in fact, it doesn't really contemplate where you would have potentially a large open space system that results in lieu of a golf course. So, in order to make a drainage system work and to pick up off-site drainage, put in pipes, et cetera, we need to impact areas that are less than fifty feet away from the property line. So, that's an important part. We believe that the buffering that you saw Dan go through provides for significant buffering. Twenty-five feet is a lot between single-family homes because your normal code requires no buffer between single-family homes. There is no buffering requirement between single-family to single-family homes. In this case, we have a minimum of twenty-five in most areas, and there is a reduction near Benita Lakes that's fifteen feet wide, but that's where their preserve is thirty-five feet wide, and they have an additional open space tract. So, the separation between two single-family homes is very significant and much more than you'd find under conventional zoning. We think that the vegetative screening we've offered is a dense requirement, and it will be certainly compatible between single-family uses and surrounding single-family homes. So, it is important. We think that it's a necessary deviation, but we also think it's a good deviation because your code has opportunities for deviations for a reason. We think we've demonstrated why we need that deviation, and we hope you'll agree with us that the deviation's appropriate and the way it's been conditioned is appropriate. So, again, on deviation eight, we're deviating from the twelve-foot minimum pathway to provide a minimum eight-foot pathway, and staff is supporting that deviation. Minimum road width, it's a kind of a peculiar part of your code, but it says that we would need a minimum width of a hundred feet for a local road connection, and at Lot eighty-six where we're proposing it, it is not that hundred feet. So, we're asking for a deviation in order to perfect that access point as well as bring in utilities and water management pipes underneath that driveway connection. We'd asked for a deviation from indigenous vegetation, and that was sought because there is some native vegetation left on the golf course. A lot of that has to be impacted for the lake system, so it can't be retained in place, but we have a condition that requires us to go back through tree advisory and do some replanting of vegetation that staff recommends. And then, deviation eleven is the one that I alluded to that I hope Mr. Fegan can clarify. He was concerned that by having so much lake area, we didn't otherwise have enough open space, and your code only allows us to count so much of a lake system towards your overall open space standard. So, Mr. Waters created an exhibit that I think, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but the area outside the lake system that would still be open space is at least twenty-nine percent, and Mr. Fegan had asked us to try to meet at least twenty percent, so we've exceeded that. So, I hope that he's now going to tell you that they are supporting that deviation. And deviation twelve, staff has recommended approval of this, and this one relates to off-site sign, both twelve and thirteen. There's an existing sign located off of Cockle Shell that has an announcement for the golf course as well as some of the other communities. It's located in the city right-of-way, and it's technically an off-site sign which your code allows, but we need the opportunity to go in and refurbish the sign, update it with the community names, whatever the golf course community will be, et cetera, and staff understood that and recommended approval. And then, deviation fourteen is one where your code, under the golf course standard, says that you can't go and alter land elevations within thirty feet of your property line. And I think you heard Mr. Waters tell you that unless we can go and modify things up to our property line, we can't fix some of the drainage problems that have historically been in this community. So, that's one of those standards that, I understand, two years ago, before you had any development opportunity in front of you, that in this particular case, it makes sense because we're trying to solve some area problems. Another golf course comes along, that deviation may not be appropriate for them because they may not have the same edge conditions, but we do need this deviation, and staff recognizes that and supported that. So, as Mr. Rooney talked to you early in the meeting and said that there are criteria that we have to deal with, there are findings in your code that we have to deal with and make sure we address. And of course, you know, number one of those is being in compliance with your Benita Springs Conference of Plan. And we did a thorough analysis of that as part of our application submittal. Staff analyzed that as part of this application, and we both concur that we are consistent with the Benita Springs Conference of Plan. One is, are we going to meet or exceed locational standards and performance standards? Well, there really are no locational and performance standards, but I think you have heard that what we're attempting to do here by converting the golf course into, not only an RPD, but make provisions for enhanced water management systems, that there, we will exceed any of the performance standards for stormwater management. Item C talks about use of bonus density credits, et cetera. We're far below your maximum density allowed now that we've reduced our unit count to three-hundred-and-fifty, so we're in compliance with that section. And then, is it compatible with surrounding area? And when we reduce the request to have single-family homes only, and we've agreed to the enhanced buffer requirements in some areas with vegetation, we think it's clearly compatible with planned and surrounding uses because, single-family to single-family, it's hard to argue it's not compatible. There are additional findings that are in your code that talk about infrastructure burdens and public facilities, and obviously, when we reduce the impact of this from five-hundred down to three-hundred-and-fifty units, we don't have any level of service or operational issues. Installation of the roundabout will help with traffic calming, so there's an overall benefit there that's results from that. We're not really affecting any environmentally critical areas. There are none really on the golf course site. There are wading birds and things that do use some of the water management areas that are in the golf course property. Obviously, with the proposed plan, we've significantly increased lake area, so there'll be habitat for wading birds, et cetera. So, there's really no impact there. The zoning board made findings that we were, with the single-family homes and the two-family attached, they are appropriate. All the conditions that staff has offered are enhancing the project and provide for safeguards to make sure that we don't have any public impact. So, they are reasonably related to our impacts that we proposed. The deviations, of course, we believe are fully warranted and largely are derived because of the proposed drainage improvement project that can be accommodated here. And then, do they enhance the objectives of the RPD? And of course, we believe they do. They offer public and private opportunities here, increased drainage improvements, open space enhancement, et cetera. And then, of course, again, one of your other requirements is that they have to determine at the zoning board level that there is adequate capacity to serve the land uses, and that is the case. There are other findings that address the criteria in the code. Is the mix of uses appropriate? It's kind of a rehash of where we are, but yes, we think the single-family does do that, and the recommendation, recommended conditions are appropriate. And then, again, another request to discuss the deviations. So, I'm not going to belabor that, but we think we have justified those, and we believe staff has analyzed those appropriately. So, in summary, you know, our RPD is consistent with the Conference of Plan. We've made an enhanced commitment in the areas that Dan showed you on a slide to provide single-story, single-family homes only nearest those adjacent residences. We did reduce the unit count to overall of three-hundred-and-fifty. We've met the findings to approve a RPD zoning. The deviations are in the public interest, and they don't damage the integrity of neighborhoods. And with the RPD including the water management designs for, you know, potential stormwater improvements, there are those public benefits as well as the roundabout and traffic calming that would accrue from the project. So, that's our presentation in chief, and I don't know if you want to ask us questions or you want to go ahead and hear from staff, but we're happy to do whichever.
If there are any questions from the council of the applicant, now would be a time to ask them, and then, or you can wait until after staff's made their presentation, see if they've addressed those questions for you.
Red?
I want to make sure everybody hears me. One thing that I think is important to point out, when the ordinance was passed roughly five years ago unanimously, there was no thought at that time about all this stormwater management and all that. That all happened very recently, probably at least a couple of years to three years after that passed. That's number one. Number two, on the landscape, can we leave that a little bit open so that if the neighbors have something they would like, they could propose it? And also, I've got an idea that I'd like to show you someplace and see what you think of it. I don't think it would increase the cost. I think it might be better, but may not. What you, I would say what you've got is okay, but is there wiggle room to change it? And I think that's probably all, only real questions I have.
Mr. Forbes, we would be happy to work with you and staff to try to craft a condition that's broad enough that we could, you know, figure that out as we get closer to development order. And I'm sure we'll have a break at some point. We can sit down with Mr. Dolmer and Mr. Fegan and talk about that.
There was one other thing that I just forgot. There was one other thing that I just forgot, and that is, the big concern I have is not as long as Baron Collier's controlling the place. I want to make sure when it's turned over, that in the master declarations that they will write for the HOA, that it's in there clearly, that they will maintain all the landscape and all these buffer areas really good and that the city has the right from time to time to come in and inspect for problems. And if they do come up with something, we're not, I wouldn't expect Baron Collier to maintain it after it's turned over to the HOA. I know you guys will take care of it.
Mr. Forbes, I know you heard Nick mention early on that we would make a commitment, that we would prepare an annual report for a period of time, making sure that the buffers and the water management system is continuing to function.
Yeah, I just want that to transcend over the HOA has got to do it. Because we have a record, some HOAs get something turned over to them pretty good and they don't maintain it. Not all of them, but here it's very critical that all this is maintained by the HOA once the turnover occurs.
Yeah, I think we understand where you are. We'll be happy to bring back some language to you before the night's over.
I just wanted the public to hear that as well.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hon, do you have any idea what the build-out time is? Is this five years, three years, ten years?
I think it's probably going to take us another year to get through all of the water management district and local permitting and then construction. So, we're probably at, close to two years out before homes start appearing on the property. And then, a lot of that's going to be absorption, but it's probably two to five years, I would think. Isn't that safe, Nick?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Mr.?
Yes. Do you recognize?
I don't know, she was waving.
No, but Chris also, she's first and then she's second and I'm third.
I know the downstream communities to Spring Creek, such as Cedar Creek and Benita Bay, are concerned with water quality. And I haven't heard from your presentation this evening how water quality is addressed. And I'm concerned that, one of the things that I wonder if you considered is using reclaim, is requiring the development to, the people that buy in there to use reclaimed water from Benita Springs Utilities. You know, I know that's not typically done in a development, but in Benita Springs and inside the new gated communities, but I think it's something that should be considered here because we're at the headwaters of Spring Creek. And I would hope that there's some data that would show that the plan for the stormwater management system will at least improve to some extent the water quality of Spring Creek as it moves down towards the downstream communities.
Okay. Dan Waters is an appropriate person to address that. Dan, you want to go down?
And I'm going to go back to, to just the master plan. So, Councilman Corey, to your question, that's something that will definitely be a part of the next step if this plan is approved and goes forward. When we get permits from the South Florida Water Management District, one of the components of that is you have to provide what they call a nutrient loading analysis. And we look at it in both the existing condition, which would be the basically existing defunct golf course. We will look at it in the proposed condition and calculate what the annual loading of nutrients to Spring Creek is in both conditions. And the district will not issue a permit unless it is less in the post-development condition than it is in the pre. One of the things that I would note is, you know, the lakes that you see here, they not only provide a stormwater benefit in terms of providing storage area and flood protection, they also provide a benefit for water quality. That would be, you know, one for, it'd be a couple of things. One, even though the golf course in its existing state isn't being fertilized and maintained, there's still a background nutrient concentration, just like any system that comes off of that that's going down to Spring Creek. Basically, when you remove those huge areas and turn this into lake, there's no nutrient loading from that because it's just basically a wet pond. So, first off, we will take out those, kind of that background from the golf course by converting this into a lake system. Secondly, the, in terms of what this system does, not only will the lakes that are here treat the runoff from the proposed homes, the new homes, it also provides a lot more storage area and what the engineering term is residence time. It's basically, on an annual basis, how long does a drop of water sit in that lake system before it goes off-site? And so, having these large permanent pools will improve the condition of the runoff from all of these surrounding areas because it gives a much bigger storage area, much longer time for that runoff from those surrounding communities to sit in the lake system, have the pollutants drop out, have the biological processes that remove pollutants occur. And part of the Water Management District permitting will be to ensure we meet state water quality standards at the discharge down to Spring Creek and also that the post-development condition is better than what it is in the existing condition. To the question on reclaimed water, we have not looked at that yet. We're not that far down the road on it. I don't know whether Benita Springs Utilities has reclaimed available. They do? Okay. So, I think that's something we'll have to evaluate when we get into design and permitting and get further along.
For the record, Mr. Waters, can you and your, offer an expert opinion as to whether or not this project will have an adverse water quality impact downstream?
No, it will not. And the final design will show that when we get a permit from South Florida Water Management District.
I'm going to hand you a document. Can you explain what that document is?
So, this is out of the applicant's handbook, volume one. It's the criteria that the Water Management District uses to base their decision on whether to issue a permit or not. And basically, essentially what it says is what we said before, that the district cannot issue a permit for a discharge to this downstream area unless we meet the state water quality standard, which would mean we do not make any impairment any worse and that the quality of our water does not contribute to a downstream impairment.
Thank you. I'm going to offer this to the clerk in the record.
Hey, Laura.
I was just going to say, well done. I'm excited. I think it's going to be fabulous in terms of how the water's going to move. So, eeks, I'm sorry, but terrific presentation for all that presenters, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Amy?
I just have a detail question, which, because you mentioned that you have fifty-three-point-six acres in what's called the public system. Is that all the water that we see here or is there something that's not in the public system?
I'll let Mr. Waters answer that part.
And sort of a joint system, like if you just take into account the three-hundred-and-fifty houses, how much of the water system would you need? That didn't include the more expansive system that we encouraged you to put in there?
Let me get that.
I assume some of this water, if we didn't have all these other things, you'd still have to put it in for the extra houses. So, those are, that's two questions.
Correct, ma'am. The typical rule of thumb is you do about fifteen percent of your site as lake system. And so, that would, you know, would be basically somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, sixteen acres or so would be what would be required. You can see this is significantly above that. And that is because, the other thing I would point out is, as we talked about on these slides, in working with the city to develop the plan that Singhafen came up with, the reason that there is more land set aside for water management than would be typical is, not only are we going to be handling storage for the existing communities that come into the golf course, it'll be handling drainage and storage and conveyance for these other areas like Paradise Woods, Fair Winds and Southlands, and then also the ability for Paradise Acres, areas that, fairly large areas that don't currently come into the golf course site will have the ability to drain into the golf course site. And so, that requires more land be dedicated and that's why that number is as high as it is.
So, if you just subtract, like, you probably would need fifteen acres, so the rest is the public system.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a fair assumption and frankly, we came into this and without blinders on and worked with the city from the beginning once we understood the problems.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a way to regulate the amount of water in a heavy storm goes down Spring Creek?
Sure.
Or do we just fill up Spring Creek? Either yawn or whatever?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, part of what, so there's a couple of different things happening there. Currently, this site is permitted for three pump stations, each at twenty-thousand gallons a minute, to just pull water basically out of the golf course into Spring Creek. And so, you know, to kind of give you, I talked about this at the planning hearing, to give you a frame of reference of what twenty-thousand gallons a minute is, fire hydrant is about a thousand gallons a minute. So, like basically, you're shooting twenty fire hydrants over Cockle Shell Drive into Spring Creek when that is, is pumping at full capacity. The Singhafen Plan proposes to change to a gravity system. And what Singhafen analyzed as part of their plan to ensure there aren't adverse impacts downstream, in the downstream communities, is, the Singhafen Plan evaluated what the existing discharge from the golf course was. They calibrated their model to Hurricane Irma, came up with what the peak rate to those downstream areas is, and then limited the discharge through their weir to be at the peak, less than what occurs today. So, and part of the Singhafen Plan also analyzed what were the existing condition stages in the areas downstream for various storms and what would they be in the proposed condition? And part of the reason that the amount of lake kept growing is we needed more storage on the golf course site so that that water was not discharging downstream and causing even the slightest of adverse impacts to downstream.
Very good, very good. And Jesse?
Yeah, just real quick, when we met, Nick, when we met and kind of were going over everything and I was talking about, you know, the drainage being the most significant component of this, you had a, you had a map and I, forgive me if I missed it here, that kind of went over all of the now input-output areas for water that were size-wise and proportionally significantly different. And like, for me, I know when I was in the meeting, I was like, wow, that does move the needle. I didn't see that here, so maybe if you can talk about that.
Sure. It's, all Dan did was break apart that one exhibit into five exhibits. So, Councilman Purtin, when you look at this and you go back, you know, and he's showing all those inputs, he's just breaking it out. I had it on one slide for you with all the different blue arrows. He said, I can do a better job explaining if I can do it through five different sketches rather than one.
Well, I mean, it was impressive just because, I mean, when you see each individual one and then you see over on that gain that they're getting over there and the size differential in the pipes, I mean, you're talking a lot of water moving. So, it's just, it was very impressive, the amount of infrastructure that's actually going in there.
It's, we went through the ten pages of the Singhafen slides and created that exhibit and Dan says, I'm going to do it in six or seven slides, which is much more detailed.
Yes, it's Chris.
I want to talk a minute about the twenty-five-foot setback.
Should we hear?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. But staff is coming on.
Okay. Lights up. One of the drawbacks of the twenty-five-foot setback is the elimination of the lake that's behind the east side of Karnoasti Court. I have a picture here of what that lake looks like. And that lake not only enhances the value of the properties, a lot of those homes along the east side of Karnoasti, they also serve a element of the comprehensive plan which deals with the environment. I've seen, I've seen deer, I've seen wading birds, I've seen bald eagles, and I've even seen a couple of bears in this property. So, I understand that this lake will be filled with what's being dug out of the ground on the south course, South Nine, and filled in with that, the dirt that comes from that. And I'm just concerned about how the property values of the homes on East Karnoasti will be impacted. And I'm also concerned that the fill will take out the lake quicker than the other lakes can be filled and there could be a great loss of habitat for, you know, what we're trying to preserve in Benita Springs as part, as our wildlife. So, if you could address that, I would, as I understand it, all the lakes that are on the golf course now will be eliminated?
Yes, and I think the issue, you know, if the golf course were still functional today, they would have been able to come in and work with your staff through site plan approvals to rework the golf course, fill in lakes, do reroute the golf course, a number of things. And, you know, the other thing I would say, people aren't always going to have the same view regardless. I mean, it is a different property owner, different properties, they both have property rights. You know, it's a, I understand the loss of a lake that they enjoy today, but to me, there's a significant buffer of twenty-five feet because it is a buffer. They have a setback, we have a setback, and the buffer's part of our property. So, it's more than just a setback. So, it's a buffer. It is a vegetative buffer of twenty-five feet in width, which is significant. So, they're going to gain an open space view in lieu of a lake view. And from a habitat standpoint, we're providing additional lake areas, far greater capacity for other fowl and other water fowl to use. And I know that Mr. Hirschenson was telling me before the meeting that there was a bobcat scene in the neighborhood swimming across the lake today, so it doesn't seem to impede them by having additional lake areas. But I would offer that what we've proposed is significant. And I understand the one property owner that I know Nick has met with and spoken with numerous times, it just, if it was simply as easy as keeping a small piece of lake there that's not connected to the rest of the lake system, we would absolutely do that, but it's not possible. This is part of a larger functional system that all have to be connected. And to keep one small little lake piece to take out, obviously, some home sites that would be our home sites, because, keep in mind, we've reduced the number of homes significantly. And I know that I've heard Nick say it, it's kind of like a balloon. When you squeeze it over here, it's got to give somewhere else. So, if we squeezed it here, we'd have to go and find more somewhere else. And this plan just doesn't seem to work well to do that. We've got it at a point that Singhafen has given us the locations for these lakes. We've put them on our master plan, we've worked with it, and this is what we have. Sure, Nick?
Councilman Corey, met with some of those people and if there's one slide that kind of shows the whole project, it's probably towards the end. Oh, we're going the wrong way. You know, this kind of shows you everything, but even if that buffer in that area you're talking about went to fifty feet, the lake still wouldn't be there. We'd still have to remove the lake. What would end up happening is, you wouldn't have the lake there, you'd have the fifty-foot buffer, but then, then all the blue that you see would, probably more than two-thirds of that would go away. That's the challenge when you look at that. And I understand the question because when we went, met with the people on Karnoasti, one person said, well, I'm going to get a lake view now. And another person, I'm going to lose the lake view. And I go, it's on our property, but it's not like we're trying to pick winners or losers. When you look at property values, you know, collectively, they do balance out. It's not like someone's going to lose a significant amount of property value. But even if that buffer went to fifty feet, that lake would go away, would have to, because it would turn into a buffer and then we'd have to reconfigure that someplace else. So, we recognize that.
City attorneys, can we take a break now?
Could I just ask one question?
Okay, sure.
Just a short question. I was, I have some concern about the twenty-five, I mean, that's where the problem is, where an issue is. And I noticed that in the criterion, that the rear, the minimum rear size was ten feet. I assume, I don't know what the properties that are already existing in Karnoasti Court, if their rear setback is also ten feet. So, that means if it is, and I don't know what your plans are for, you know, what you're putting in there. I think even if you had the twenty-five-feet buffer, if it were some ability to make the rear setback for the houses, the new houses, be a little more than ten feet, I think it would make people feel a little more comfortable. And I really don't know what the rear setback is in existing And I, I really don't know what the rear setback is on existing ones, but I just added the two together to 25, and I got 45 feet, and I thought, well, it'd be nice if we were a little bit larger. And I don't know what your designs are, if that's possible, or what I'm asking for, but it did enter my mind.
We're, we're gonna have Wayne just check that right now, real quick, but there were a couple of slides I'll show you that were interesting, because I, I said to Wayne, hopefully I'm going the right direction now.
Yep.
Let me get to it, and we're back at the end, and, you know, I asked a question of staff, this was interesting, I said, "What's the neighborhood look like?" Because, you know, one of the things we like to do is be compatible to the rest of the neighborhood. So if you, if you look what's on the visualizer right now, those circles are, are communities right now in that community. They're right next to where we are. So you start looking in, right? And you go, "Look, the rear yards are even less than what we're proposing without a buffer." So, you know, I'll scroll through them, and you go, some of these have no vegetation between them and a fence, some of them are 25 feet apart, just building to building. So when we start looking at this, I start going, you know, we're, we're gonna have a bigger buffer than everybody else in the neighborhood have, rear yard to rear yard. And, and we did that analysis, because I, I said, "Someone's gonna ask that question. Are you comparable and compatible to the rest of the, to the neighborhood?" So, each one of those areas, and you can, you can review it even at the break if you'd like, and then compare them to the circles that are around the north tract, the buffer's bigger. And I go, "So we are compatible, we're, we're at least not making things worse than what the community already, you know, has today." But Wayne will check that setback, and maybe she'll answer that question.
Counsel, what I, what I would recommend at this point, if you're inclined to take a break, when we come back from the break, staff go through their presentation, public will have their opportunity, depending how long that goes, you may want to take another small break before the applicant or staff come back to answer any of the questions by the public, then you may follow up with additional questions and, and a motion. What I, what I do ask, though, is during the break, please refrain from having conversations with the applicant or the public, that the other, other members of the hearing don't have the opportunity of participating in.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Wayne, were you finished with your comment, or you weren't?
Mr. Mayor, I, I can't answer Ms. Quambro's question. So, we have development standards that we've proposed for our project, and we have two setback standards for rear yards. We have a 10-foot setback as a minimum, but we also have a 25-foot perimeter from our planned development boundary. So, nowhere would our buildings be closer than 25 feet to the property line. And I asked staff on the break, what some of the surrounding homes are permitted to be, and they're 20 feet, so we would be five feet farther away from a property line than they're allowed to be.
Okay, thank you.
All right? Thank you.
Now, the great Michael Fegon.
Okay, Mike. I'm doing it with magic, I'm not even using my hands. All right, uh-
Magic mic.
There you go, oh boy. Good evening, Mike Fegon with Community Development for the Record, here to give the staff presentation on this project. I'll try my best not to be too repetitive, you just received a lot of information from the applicant, all very good, so I will do my best to not try and be super repetitive, and just provide the staff analysis to some of what you heard, and from the staff perspective, how we analyzed it and reviewed it going forward. So as always, the agency review team included myself, Laura Gibson with Environmental, Tom Ross, did the transportation review, Stuart Smith, one of our engineers, Jay Sweet, city surveyor, Sean Gibbons, who is our bike ped coordinator, and newly minted AICP. And we also had Public Works take a look, Lee County Natural Resources, and the Consulting Attorneys, Theriak in Spain. So, this was covered already, but it probably makes sense to go over it once more, what the standard of review is, and what the plan development review criteria are in your land development code. So, these are the criteria in which this project was reviewed against. This is the criteria within the code that is required to be reviewed, to make a determination whether or not a project should be recommended for approval or denial. So this is the criteria that staff has used, it's outlined in your code, in terms of the review and the findings of fact for this particular case. And then at the end of this presentation, I'll go through and give the staff recommendation on how this project met or didn't meet each of the criteria. So the request, as we all know, probably don't need to rehash that, we, the property was already zoned residential, it has residential future land use already. The golf course redevelopment code requires it to be rezoned to a residential plan development, so that was the overall purpose of the application, and as you've heard over and over again, it is for a maximum of 350 dwelling units. The aerial, I don't think we need to spend too much time on this, I think we're all familiar with where in the city this is by now, off of Paradise, towards the northern end of the city. With the background, yes, this was a former public golf course, it closed in the mid 2000s, and it's been dormant ever since. And during that closing period, there was some maintenance of the golf course that was continued, such as grass cutting and certain landscaping and things like that. And there was some maintenance that was, to be blunt, was neglected, such as a lot of what had to do with the drainage system. You know, you heard before about how the pump station, you know, is completely inoperable at this point, and you heard about how a lot of the, the pipes that are, that were used for the original drainage system have outlived their usefulness. So there is a sense of some of that site being in somewhat of, of disarray with, with issues with maintenance. And the original request, when it first was presented to staff, was for 500 units with a variety of housing types, including single-family, two-family attached, and multifamily. And throughout the process of going back and forth with city staff, the number of units was reduced down to 350, and the housing types were reduced down to single-family and two-family attached, which is essentially a villa-style product that you may be familiar with. So this is a picture of the original master concept plan that was submitted, when they were asking for the 500 dwelling units, and one of the things that you can see on there is that the, the developable land area and the proposed residential tracks were a lot larger than what we ultimately ended up with in the current proposed plan. And there was somewhat of a, of a flex area off of, off of Carnoust, oop, sorry, going too fast, off of Carnoustie, where at first it wasn't completely determined if it was going to be a residential tract or water management. So, in this initial submittal to staff, you know, staff sent out a, a letter back to the applicant outlining some of the concerns, based on what we're supposed to be reviewing and the information they're supposed to provide. And one of the concerns that we had was, you know, what, what are you gonna do with that flex area? You know, we, we think it needs, you need to choose, is it, you're gonna propose it as residential, or you're gonna propose it for water management? So in going back and forth, ultimately, they proposed it for water management, and this is the plan now that's being presented. So you have much more well-defined water management areas, no more flex tracks, and you have the reduction in density, so you have the reduction in the residential tract areas as well, and you have the limitation for it being single-family or two-family only. As far as the schedule of uses is concerned, it's relatively customary for residential plan developments, as far as what they're asking for. But even within that, you know, one of the criteria that staff looks at is compatibility with the surrounding areas, and one of the issues that we had was the provision of wanting entrance gates and having it be restricted with gated access for vehicular traffic. And it isn't something that you see in the surrounding residential areas. So that was something that, that staff essentially said, you know, listen, we understand that while, in an RPD overall, it may be appropriate, given the compatibility with the area, and the fact that you don't really see entrance gates or gatehouses in the area, we would request that that be removed, and they ultimately did agree to that. And then you also saw how there was a request to remove the multifamily components and the townhouse component as well, and they agreed to that. So you're left with a schedule of uses that the staff opinion is compatible with residential plan developments, and also with the surrounding area. So this is an example of some of the development regulations, and I apologize for how small they are. They're in your packet as Exhibit C, as far as what they'll be, be holding to, to build to. And I, I just pulled these from the, the northern tract development regs. The northern tract and the southern tract are proposing the same development regs overall, and you can see where it outlines, you know, the proposed lot sizes, the setbacks to the residential tracks, and also a perimeter setback to the project boundary as a whole. And, and these regs that they're proposing are relatively typical for what we see for residential plan developments. Overall, we really didn't see any red flags or concerns with the proposed development regs. One concern that we did see had to do with the clubhouse area, where in terms of the allowable height, they were proposing a height of 45 feet for the potential little amenity tract, and that's actually in violation of the comp plan to go that high. So the staff made a condition that it be reduced to 35 feet, which is more appropriate and more in line with the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicant did agree to that. As far as the deviations go, there were 14 deviations that were requested overall. In the staff report that you have in front of you, there were nine that staff was recommending approval, staff was recommending denial of three, and withdrawal of two. One of the things that Wayne touched on was, there was one deviation where the way it was written by staff was, if you're able to provide additional information for us to consider, it may help staff get to the point of recommending approval, and we did get there. So when we get to that deviation, I will cover that particular circumstance and what changed in order for staff to feel comfortable recommending approval. So going through them, deviation one, as the applicant had the stush, this was the deviation that actually, you know, it's a prohibition in the code for gates and, and walls within golf course redevelopment areas. And, you know, essentially, the justification that was provided was that gates wouldn't really undermine interconnectivity, per se, because they're gonna be providing a pedestrian path, as you heard, that's open to the public, and, and the walls would essentially be used as a screening technique, where development tends to be a bit closer to the perimeter boundary than what the conventional code would suggest. And again, since many of the surrounding neighborhoods are not gated, and the goal is to have compatibility with the surrounding communities, the staff preference was to deny the gated request for that. But as far as the walls go, you do see walls in the surrounding neighborhoods, you see them used as entryway features for some of the neighborhoods, as well as perimeter walls. So, that one staff was a bit more comfortable recommending approval for. So it'd be denial for the gated access, but approval for the walls, with the understanding that these walls be treated as residential project walls. And residential project walls in the code require landscaping on the exterior side, so that the existing residential properties aren't just staring at a blank wall. It has to be landscaped with at least a seven-and-a-half-foot-wide landscape area, trees, shrubs, the whole deal, and they did agree to that. The second deviation has to do with requiring fencing around excavation, in this case, water management areas, if these areas are located within 100 feet from property under separate ownership. And the request of the applicant is to not require fencing around these proposed lakes. And the justification is that, you know, the lakes, in essence, are serving as a public benefit, and they would provide a lake view for residents in the surrounding communities and in the proposed community as well, and that a fence could potentially detract from that. I don't think staff disagrees with that in concept. The issue that staff had, and the reason why staff recommended denial, was because typically, that is a safety issue that is reviewed at time of local development order, and it's not really reviewed at the zoning stage. So, staff didn't feel that this was the appropriate time to review a deviation like this, and that it, it is more appropriate at the development order stage. And especially since, you know, since this is a concept plan overall, you know, the, these things tend to be reviewed when you have the engineering plans in front of you, all the exact calculations and so forth. So, that was the reason why staff recommended denial of that one. For the third deviation, this had to do with a requirement for bike ped facilities in a public right-of-way, in this case, Paradise Road. And the request was to allow an alternate pathway system that would essentially take pedestrian traffic off of Paradise Road and route it through the south nine of the project, and connect to a, a city pathway system on the south side of the south nine along Cockle Shell. The justification that the applicant gave is that the Paradise Road right-of-way is constrained, so the ability to make improvements in line with the code would be relatively constrained, and that an alternate system would, in essence, be safer, and it would still be open to the public. And staff understands where the applicant's coming from, in that if, if you go up and down Paradise, you do have an existing sidewalk. In certain areas, it's maybe two feet away from the travel lanes, it's very, very close. To give you an example, the, the new code would require separation of between five and six feet, so it's, it's very, very close. It's a situation that the city inherited, and it is what it is. But staff also heard the safety concern from surrounding residents, and how many of them really didn't want to walk down the sidewalk on Paradise because of how close it was to the existing travel lane. So, staff felt that the applicant justification of creating an alternate pathway system that could take pedestrian traffic off of Paradise and route it through a safer area, we felt that it had merit. But staff did recommend that if this deviation were to be approved, that the pathway system that they are proposing be widened. The initial proposal was for a six-foot-wide path, and staff was requesting an eight-foot-wide path to make it easier for traveling two ways in pedestrian, and the applicant agreed to that. For the fourth deviation, this has to do with a code section in the development standards section of the land development code, that requires projects that have more than five acres to provide two or more means of ingress and egress, and their request is to allow one access point for each tract, one access point for the north nine, one access point for the south nine. For the north parcel, the only other option would be to utilize a portion of the property off of Carnoustie, which is currently being designed for water management. And I, I think, in, in that regard, that particular design made sense, as far as using that for additional water management, as opposed to an additional access point. For the south parcel, the original master concept plan did show a secondary access off of Cockle Shell, and that access point was removed and replaced with water management, after going back and forth with the city's consultants. So there seemed to be a preference on the water management aspect of it, from that standpoint. So, staff does understand that the access points are relatively limited, due to the amount of water management that is being proposed for the site. One of the conditions that staff has in place is that there's a notification provision in the code, and there's a notification provision that requires an emergency access plan, that if you are gonna have restricted access points, that you provide an emergency access plan to be reviewed at time of local development order. It gets reviewed by the emergency services to make sure that the plan is sufficient during an emergency on the site. If it's not satisfactory, they would have to revise the plan and provide the access points. If it is satisfactory, again, with the emergency management team being the reviewers for it, if they feel it's appropriate, staff would be okay with recommending approval of that particular deviation. So, staff is recommending approval, subject to that emergency access plan being reviewed and approved by the emergency services, Benita Fire and the like. For the fifth deviation, this is a code section that requires minimum dimensional standards for complete streets. And essentially, what they are requesting was to allow for an alternate design. But when we reviewed the, the alternate design, it met the intent of the code. It, it had an appropriate roadway cross-section, it had appropriate sidewalk widths, it had shared bike lanes, which are permitted by your code, and it satisfied the requirements of the LDC. So staff didn't feel that that deviation was really needed, so the recommendation of staff was to just withdraw that one. And, and the same goes for deviation six. There was a concern originally with regards to the street trees that they were required to plant along the internal roadway system that they are creating, and there was a concern that, you know, about how to, how to deal with conflicts with potential utilities, BSU, so on and so forth, and not planting over their infrastructure. Well, the code already accounts for that, the code already, you know, stipulates essentially, you, you need to avoid conflicts with BSU water mains and forest mains, and overhead power lines and things like that. So, the code already accounts for those conflicts, so this is another one where staff didn't feel that it was really necessary. So this is another one where staff didn't feel that it was really necessary because the code already accounts for it. For deviation seven, this is the one that has to do with reducing the fifty-foot wide buffer. So you do have a code requirement in your golf course redevelopment code that requires a fifty-foot wide buffer and screening with a minimum of six feet in height of screening to, and the request is to allow a reduced buffer in certain areas, and that's key. This is not a full-scale deviation that would apply throughout the entire project. It's tied to specific areas on the master concept plan where the buffer would be reduced. When you look at, you know, what the applicant provided as the justification, you know, you do have this buffer and you have a buffer that is intended twofold, really. It's intended to be visual and it's intended to be spatial as well, as far as what the function of it is. And actually, I would take it a step further and say another reason for the buffer is to also help avoid potential micro drainage issues that you could potentially get from building too close to another neighborhood, another community that already has existing drainage infrastructure. And essentially, what the applicant is saying is that in certain areas, because of how much land area is being devoted to water management, certain sections of the project are constrained. And, you know, similar to the balloon analogy, that if they were to try and, you know, squeeze it back on this end, it would pop out somewhere else and throw off the balance on that end. So what you have here is the proposal that they feel is the best balance overall. And, you know, they're requesting in many areas of the project to use the proposed lakes as part of that buffer requirement. And in fact, you know, that does tend to make sense since much of the lake area, as you saw in the master concept plan, tends to be on the perimeter of the project. So it makes sense to be allowed to use the lake area in many ways as part of the buffer requirement. And they are proposing landscaping and a six-foot wall where that buffer is going to be less than fifty feet to help break it up visually. So this is actually a good example of a cross-section where you can see the reduced buffer on the top part, and you can see where you have the existing home site. You have a slope that goes down into a drainage system, landscaping that they are proposing, additional drainage, the proposed wall. On the other side of that, you have drainage for the home tracks that are being created, followed by the backyards for their proposed homes. So I think that's important to note because I think there seems to be this misnomer that the twenty-five-foot buffer means you're going to have twenty-five feet and then a home. That's not how it's designed. They have a mandatory twenty-five-foot setback from the perimeter of the project, and they are using that twenty-five-foot area to plant it, landscape it, and provide some of the needed drainage infrastructure. So it's still serving the function that it's required to serve by code. Overall, the staff preference would be to just, you know, do a lot of heavy landscaping and not necessarily do a wall or a fence. We understand the purpose that a wall or fence could serve, especially in areas where there might be an issue with potential headlight glare from existing residential areas. So we do understand the purpose a wall could serve, and that's why we are recommending approval of this particular condition going forward. For the eighth deviation, this is a code section that requires that if you are reducing the buffer, the fifty-foot wide buffer to anything less than that, that you provide a tree-lined trail within that reduced buffer. And essentially, what they're saying is, well, can we utilize that alternate pathway system to serve as that potential trail? And it does make sense. They are providing this alternate pathway plan. A pathway plan really isn't possible on the northern tract because of how scrunched everything is anyway with all the water management areas that are there. They are proposing sidewalks throughout the site, so there still are going to be pedestrian connections. Those pedestrian connections on both the north and the south are going to be available to the public in perpetuity. So we felt the intent was met in terms of that particular code section. So staff is recommending approval of that particular deviation for those reasons. For the ninth deviation, this has to do with the roadway width. And in the golf course redevelopment section of the code, you do have standards for roadway width depending on whether or not there's going to be development on either side, one side, or both sides. And essentially, what they're saying is, you know, can we utilize our proposed access point for the north nine, which is lot eighty-six, which you heard about before? Can we use that as our primary access? But to do that, you know, the standards would have to change as far as what that allowable roadway width is down to a hundred and twenty-nine feet. And I think it's something that they would have had to have asked for that deviation anyway, even if they weren't accessing off of the proposed access point of lot eighty-six. If they were going to use the access point that was afforded to them off of Carnoustie, that wasn't meeting the standard either. So it's a deviation that regardless of which section of the project they plan to access from, it was going to be needed. So staff does agree to it, and we agree to it because they were able to provide a cross-section that more clearly demonstrated what the proposed access was going to look like and how it was going to be planted and buffered from the proposed residential areas. And that's what gave staff some additional comfort in approving that deviation or recommending approval for that deviation. This would be for the northern tract only. The southern tract does not have the same access constraints that the northern tract does. So staff would recommend approval of this deviation for the northern tract only. For the tenth deviation, this has to do with heritage trees. In the land development code, you have a heritage tree preservation section that essentially says that, you know, if you're going to remove a heritage tree, you're supposed to replace it elsewhere on site. The original plan that they proposed, there wasn't a replacement plan attached to that. The original deviation was just to remove the trees. So, you know, staff, in a letter back to the applicant, said that, you know, I think from the staff perspective, you need to look at replacement, you know, as a standard. So the revised request did come in saying, okay, we are going to go ahead and replace whatever heritage trees we ultimately remove. We'll replace them at a one-to-one ratio, which is fine. And the request that they have is that the allowable height of the trees be at fourteen feet instead of the code required twenty. So a lot of the heritage trees that are on-site that were observed would be in areas that are now shown on the master concept plan for water management. So something had to give. So they agreed to do a replacement, and they agreed to do a replacement at fourteen feet, which staff felt comfortable with going forward because we are getting that replacement where originally we weren't. For the eleventh deviation, this is a code section that limits how much you can count a body of water towards your open space requirement. All these projects have to provide a required amount of open space, and the code tends to limit your ability to count lakes to no more than twenty-five percent of what your ultimate open space requirement is. And they're requesting to use the lakes to count towards forty percent of that overall requirement. This is a deviation that likely wouldn't be needed if there wasn't so much lake area on the plan. They would have been able to meet the black and white of the code for open space by using other means. And at the time, and during zoning board as well, you know, essentially, the staff position was that we would consider approval of that deviation if the applicant was able to provide analysis that they were getting at least twenty percent of the required open space from something other than the stormwater lakes. So dried attention areas, pedestrian ways, open space for the residential tracks. Those are all areas that can be counted towards the open space requirement. So it was essentially, can you show us that you're getting it from these other areas as well? And if you can, I think that satisfies the requirement overall. And they were able to provide a table that shows that they are getting open space from those other areas, and they are exceeding it as far as what the staff request was by pulling it from those other areas. So this is one of the ones where staff feels comfortable now with this additional analysis recommending approval of deviation eleven for that reason. So the original recommendation was denial. We didn't feel there was enough info. We didn't feel they properly demonstrated they could get it from other areas. They have since done that. So staff is comfortable recommending approval of that particular deviation. Deviation twelve has to do with the sign. There is an existing off-site sign that's on the corner of Old Forty-One and Cockle Shell. The sign has been around for fifteen-plus years, probably longer, and the sign doesn't meet the standards of the current sign code that was passed in 2015. The sign was built before that sign code was passed. But under the current code, it's a non-conforming sign. And the code places limitations on how much of a non-conforming sign you're allowed to alter or change. And they are requesting to be allowed to exceed some of those thresholds to freshen up the sign and provide some much-needed maintenance on that sign. Again, you know, the sign is old, but it is a used sign. There are other community names on that sign that are back there in the golf course area that do use that sign. So it is still a necessary sign as far as staff is concerned. And if the applicant is agreeing to go ahead and refurbish that sign in exchange for being able to put their community names on that sign, that makes sense because the sign is in need of refurbishment anyway. So staff is recommending approval of that deviation with the stipulation that the existing community names be included in that refurbishment and that those community names be allowed to remain on that sign in perpetuity. So it's not that this developer is going to come in and take over the sign and remove the existing community names, and they're not going to be able to utilize that sign anymore. That's not the way it's written in the approval. The existing communities that already use that sign will still be able to use it. The applicant's going to freshen up and maintain it. Deviation thirteen is along those same lines. This is considered an off-site sign because it is not located on the project site, and the existing sign code requires that off-site signs be located within five hundred feet of the nearest intersection of a turning movement to the project. This one is a bit further than five hundred feet from the project, but since it's already existing and it's already being used, again, they're requesting, can we just go ahead and keep it, maintain it, freshen it up, so on and so forth? So similar to the previous deviation, staff didn't see any harm in that. And again, the stipulation being that the existing community names be included in the refurbishment and remain in perpetuity. And finally, for the fourteenth deviation, this is a deviation from a code section that prohibits alterations of elevation within thirty feet of a golf course boundary. So essentially, you know, there's a line of demarcation where if you're within thirty feet of the boundary, you're not supposed to do any elevation changes. What you see on the proposed master concept plan is a lot of this stormwater lake area is within thirty feet of that boundary in many areas. So their request is, you know, to make this stormwater improvement, to make this system work by creating berms and swales to help direct the water to where it needs to go, the elevation's going to have to be altered. And that made sense to staff from that perspective. We felt that was a valid justification to help provide that stormwater benefit. So staff is recommending approval of that. Moving on to the comprehensive plan, this is also one of the criteria that staff reviewed this project against as required by the code. You have two different future land use categories for the northern tract and the southern tract. They're both residential. There's just a slight difference in what the allowable density is. In the northern tract, it's five-point-eight units per acre, and in the southern tract, it's six units per acre. So if you do the math based on the land area that they have, the north tract by code could potentially be for three-hundred-and-thirty units. Whether or not that would functionally work, you know, is a completely different story. But they're coming in way under that, and I think they're proposing around, what is it, two-hundred-ish maybe on the northern tract? So they're coming in way under what the comp plan would allow in terms of density. The same goes for the southern tract. If you do the math, it comes out somewhere around two-hundred-and-eighty units that they could ask for on that southern tract, and it's going to be somewhere around the one-thirty, one-forty range more than likely when all is said and done. The other areas of those two future land use categories that we looked at were the maximum height, the overall intended uses. It's a residential land use, and this is a residential project, just to keep it, you know, nice and simple. So we really didn't see any conflicts with what was being proposed with the future land use categories of the comprehensive plan. Moving on to stormwater, this is another component, and it's also in your comprehensive plan, and it is something that the city staff did review. So you heard a lot of history about the original stormwater system and what they're going to be doing to improve it. I'm going to be a bit more brief in my staff comments of it overall, but you do have an old stormwater system. It was approved in March of nineteen eighty, and it currently tries to accept water from surrounding communities. That's the way it was originally developed. And you have approximately a hundred and seventy acres worth of off-site contributions that send their water through the golf course and ultimately discharge to Spring Creek. Post Irma, the city applied for FEMA funding to develop and construct a flood reduction project for the Paradise Road and surrounding communities. And in September of 2020, the city was awarded modeling and design funding through FEMA to model and design these proposed improvements, and they contracted with Sing-Hoffin Associates to do the modeling. In June of 2021, you heard a presentation from Sing-Hoffin where they presented three options to consider for the stormwater improvement. Option one was a storage and conveyance option that required approximately forty-four acres of golf course land. Option two was a strictly conveyance option for thirty-five acres, and option three required the most amount of land, it's seventy-one acres, and it was essentially a storage area and a borrow area for fill. All three options required use of the golf course property to make it work, but options one and two were the cost-beneficial options for the city, and that is a FEMA grant requirement is that it be cost-beneficial. So a direction was provided to approach the property owner and try and develop a hybrid of options one and two for this flood reduction project. And what you see is a master concept plan that accounts for that modeling. And I think you had heard before that, I think approximately twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent of the land area is going to be utilized for lakes for the stormwater project. When you also take into account the additional dried attention drainage areas that they're proposing, the drainage easements, they're going to no doubt be all throughout the site to carry water from the home sites to these lakes. It's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty to thirty-five percent of the overall land area of this project being devoted to stormwater in some form or faction. And what you also have is a complete revamp, if you will, of the standards. You know, back in nineteen eighty, when this golf course was first permitted, the design standard was a one-day, five-year storm event, which is good for about five and a half inches of water, give or take. The standards of nineteen eighty are not the standards of today. The new standard is a three-day, twenty-five-year storm event, which is about eleven and a half inches of water, give or take. And for the home sites, it's a three-day, a hundred-year storm event, which is about thirteen and a half, close to fourteen inches of rain respectively. So this is an arrow that just shows, you know, from the original permit, what was designed to, which communities were designed to send their water through the golf course. And what the applicant is proposing is to still take on all of the water from those communities plus more. So that's where the public benefit comes into play as far as we see it. We also reviewed the traffic component of this project. We do have a traffic engineer that reviewed their traffic impact statement. And again, the original traffic impact statement was designed for five hundred units and a mix of single-family and multifamily. So when they amended their request down to three-fifty, they also amended their traffic impact statement to account for three-hundred-and-fifty units. So there were various road race segments that were reviewed and analyzed when reviewing this statement. Everything from, you know, Paradise Road from the north parcel to the southern parcel, the access points, the southern parcel down to the Shangri-La intersection, Cockle Shell from Maddox to Shangri-La, Shangri-La from Cockle Shell to Paradise, Imperial Parkway, both north and south of Shangri-La. There were multiple roadway sections and segments that were analyzed as part of the traffic impact study. And what we saw was that none of these segments that were proposed to be affected would operate below their level of service capacity. So this project would not cause a strain on the required level of service of these roadways. One of the things that we did see was that, you know, the data suggested that something probably needs to be done on Paradise to help with the movement of traffic, whether it was a turn lane or some other mechanism to help keep the traffic moving. And one of the things that you saw in the proposed design- And one of the things that you saw in the proposed design is a roundabout that is being proposed on Paradise as a potential traffic calming device, which seems to make sense. And that would be a roundabout that would be paid for by the applicant. It would go through permitting with Public Works because it is a city-maintained road, but it would be paid for or constructed by the applicant. The design of that roundabout is still relatively conceptual. So one of the things we wanted to make sure was that we didn't want to tie the approval to this specific roundabout design because, you know, it may come time that at the engineering stage where you get the detailed final versions of the plans, perhaps a radius is changing a little bit, so on and so forth. So we wanted it to be tied to that, but the concept seemed to make sense for what it's intended to do, which is provide traffic calming, but also keep the flow of traffic moving on Paradise. And this is tied to a condition, condition four, in your draft ordinance, which is going to require traffic monitoring at the intersection of Paradise and Shangri-La. The methodology in terms of, you know, the method of collecting that data and giving it to the city, we think that's best to be determined at time of local development order as long as the applicant agreed to the traffic monitoring condition, which they have done. And also with traffic, you know, we're not talking about just cars. We're also talking about bicycles and pedestrians, and they are providing the necessary infrastructure to accommodate those modes of transportation as well. You heard about the alternate pathways plan, which is a pedestrian path. They are going to be providing share rows within their neighborhood, which is where you allow the bicyclists and the cyclists to share a roadway. And that's relatively typical when you have roadways that have a low design speed like these internal neighborhood roadways would. So they are meeting the intent of all the traffic requirements in the code. We also reviewed the environmental components. And as you heard before, you know, there were some wading birds that were observed on site. There were two listed species that were observed, which were the little blue heron and the tri-colored heron. Staff didn't see too much of an issue with that because these are wading birds that like to hang around water, and they like to hang around water's edges. Well, they're going to have a heck of a lot of water in this proposed design, so we didn't see it as an issue as far as how it would affect the species that were observed on site. There were some heritage trees observed, which we talked about in a deviation previously. They do have to go before the tree advisory board before they can remove those, but as we had already discussed, they are proposing to replace them at a one-to-one ratio. So if they remove a heritage tree, they're going to be planting a tree elsewhere on site. So with that, we end up with the ultimate plan development review criteria. So this is the same criteria that you saw on an earlier slide. It's also an attachment A in your packet that has to do with all the criteria that staff reviews these requests against to make a recommendation. So compliance with the Bonita Plan and the LDC, we do believe it meets all the applicable code sections. Meets or exceeds performance and location standards. There really aren't concrete performance and location standards. You can say that there are some location standards in terms of that buffering requirement that's come up over and over again and certain distances from the project boundary. Where they are meeting the standard is that where they're having issues or proposed design issues with those areas, they requested the necessary deviations to try and deal with that appropriately. So they took the correct steps to deal with some of those potential issues. So because of that, we feel it gets a check mark. Density. We talked about density and how they are well below what they ultimately could ask for, so we did not see an issue with density in the Bonita Plan. Compatibility with existing or planned uses. It's a residential project that's in a residential area, so we didn't see a real compatibility issue. The dwelling unit types are going to be similar to what's there, so we didn't see an issue with what was being proposed there. No undue burden on infrastructure. We do agree that they can meet that requirement and that they've mostly met it already. We do have that traffic monitoring condition that's going to be in play to help, you know, provide the city with additional fresh data to determine if additional improvements need to be made. So we think that's going to be a huge step. It won't adversely affect any environmentally critical areas. Public facilities are available to service the site. We do believe that staff's conditions do provide safeguards and that they are reasonably related to the request. And we do believe that the crux of the deviations do promote and enhance the project overall, other than the ones we recommend denial for. The deviations we recommend denial for, obviously we recommend denial for a reason, but the ones we approved, we feel meet that standard. So with that, we get to the zoning board recommendation. When the zoning board heard this case earlier, they did recommend to approve as conditioned by staff, and they did recommend an added condition that home sites abutting the 25-foot buffer area should be limited to one story. And I think staff is comfortable with that as well. I think the caveat would be that we're really talking about the home sites that abut Karnu Sti Court. Were they abut a preserve area along Bonita Lakes, it's probably less of an impact. It's more of an impact for the residents on Karnu Sti. But, you know, I think that condition makes sense and has merit, so we would ask that that condition be included in the final version, should it be adopted. And ultimately, the zoning board did recommend approval of the project overall at five to two. So with that, we come to the staff recommendation, which is to recommend approval with the following conditions that are outlined in the staff report and in your draft ordinance. So the project needs to be generally consistent with the 10-page master concept plan that you've seen, and it shall not exceed 350 units. As far as the schedule of uses, you know, that's also attached in your packet. No multifamily, no vehicular gates, no townhouses. Single-family, okay. Two-family attached, okay. You want to mess with the sign to make it better, that's okay. Excavation is okay to help dig some of these lakes, no issues there. The development regs are Exhibit C in your report, and we do ask that they abide by those development regulations. Other than, one change would be to that amenity area that we discussed, where originally they were proposing a height that was too high for the code, to go ahead and reduce that to a code height of 35 feet, and they did agree to that. Condition four is for the traffic monitoring at the corner of Paradise and Shangri-La and that intersection with the data collection methodology to be determined at time of local development order. Condition five has to do with increasing that proposed pathway that they're going to have to take traffic off of Paradise, increasing it to eight feet, which they've already done in their revised cross-sections, so no issues there. Condition six had to do with the notification standards for that emergency preparedness plan, essentially just writing it into the code that this is going to be a requirement. This needs to be done because that's the only way staff is comfortable with that deviation and that if it's not approved by emergency services, they would have to come back and revise the master concept plan to provide the required access points. But this code section does propose that they be allowed to do that administratively, assuming, you know, that we're not talking about a full-scale change to the plan. If it's very narrowly scoped, we feel that we have enough information to do a review of those things administratively. Condition seven, oh, sorry, I think it was on the last slide as well. Condition seven had to do with the perimeter walls and fences and how if they are proposing a wall or a fence, that it be treated as a residential project wall, which again requires landscaping on both sides of the wall so that the existing residences aren't just facing a wall. Condition eight, which ties to deviation seven, which essentially says, you know, you're going to provide additional landscaping where you can for a stronger screen and a stronger buffer. If you're going to do a fencing plan, as you heard before, I think there's still some discussion about what type of fence material should be used if they were to go forward with that. We understand that they've been in touch with multiple residences about their preference. Ultimately, they need to decide what works best for them and their project, and we feel that they can go ahead and provide for that plan at time of local development order. And if the fencing is approved and submitted, it needs to be consistent with the cross-sections that they've already proposed in the master concept plan. And this is also where we would amend the condition to say that home sites along that 25-foot buffer area along Karnu Sti Court specifically be limited to one story in height to, again, help with that visual impact that some of those residents may be receiving. Condition nine is to provide a revised cross-section at time of local development order to show some of these enhanced buffers and planting areas in areas where a pathway is impossible. As you saw, you know, the pathway is really going to run through the south nine. There's not going to be a pathway on the north nine. They're going to provide sidewalks along the streetscape, which is fine. But in areas where they can't provide a pathway, we are asking that they provide additional landscaping and better thickness, if you will, of that landscape buffer area. The next condition has to do with, I'm sorry, same one actually, still has to do with where they are proposing a pathway to increase that pathway width from six feet to eight feet, so making it bigger, better for everybody. Condition 10 is pursuant to deviation 10, and this is where, you know, essentially, we still want them to try and secure the required plantings for the replacement of the heritage trees. The code requires that they be planted at a specific height of 20 feet. We understand that mature landscaping right now in Florida, and this has been this way for a couple of years, is very difficult to come by. So we're okay with the reduced height for landscaping. Originally, it's going to grow when it's planted, after it's planted, but, you know, we're okay with the reduced height initially as long as it doesn't drop below 14 feet. Condition 11 has to do with the signs, making sure that the existing communities that are on those signs remain. Condition 12 has to do with the roundabout, you know, as we discussed before, you know, the design of the roundabout isn't finalized yet. We want to allow some room for maneuverability, no pun intended, of that based on the final engineering plans. The next condition has to do with whether or not the applicant uncovers any artifacts once they start digging. We have a requirement in here now that states that if you do find anything, any type of artifacts, that work stops. You contact the State Division of Historic Resources. They come out and they do an analysis to see what you find. And again, this would be for any subsurface work that's done. Condition 14 requires the developer to hold another neighborhood meeting prior to commencement of construction. They've already held multiple neighborhood meetings with multiple communities in the area, and essentially what we're asking is that once all of these final plans have been submitted and approved, the engineering plans, the details are there, that they hold one more meeting to keep the neighborhood in the loop of what is ultimately going to be built. But it's all going to be based off of the concept plan that's being proposed. The next condition is that, you know, you know, they need to provide the required multimodal facilities, which they are. If you have conflicts with water management and utilities and things of that nature, you know, the code already accounts for that, but you got to provide the multimodal facilities, and they have to be designed in accordance with the LDC where you can do it. Condition 16 stipulates that deviations that have been denied could be reevaluated upon additional information being provided to staff. So there were still a few deviations that the staff is recommending denial of. This deviation essentially gives them the opportunity to still try and work with staff on a resolution for some of those deviations if they so choose. They would need to file for a plan development amendment to do that, but it would be administrative. If they are proposing any new deviations, anything you haven't seen, anything that isn't part of this application, that would require another public hearing and for them to come back in front of you to get that ultimate approval. So that's what that condition says. And the final condition essentially says that by approving this zoning action, if it were to be approved, that does not guarantee that they would get their development order. That does not guarantee building permits. This is purely just for the zoning and the master concept plan. So with that, if you have any questions of staff, I have the whole team here, and we're happy to answer.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, and so Chris, Chris had his hand up.
Yes.
Mike, I'm looking back at ordinance 1907, Section 1, Paragraph 20, Paragraph 13. It says, "Any deviations requested shall require the owner of real property to demonstrate a bona fide need for the deviation." I look at deviation seven as a way in which the developer can increase the number of buildable lots by filling in the lake and being able to construct homes. It is my understanding that the city's position with respect to bona fide reasons has never been that, gee, by doing this, we'll give them the ability to have enough buildable lots so that they can make the profit that they're wanting to make off the development. That profit is not a bona fide reason. So I'm just wondering how staff looked at that.
Sure. No, very fair question. Yes, staff didn't look at it from a perspective of cost benefit to the applicant. That's not in the review criteria. To kind of keep the explanation simple, I think what you have here is a concept plan and a design that tries to do multiple things. So in addition to making it a viable project for the applicant, which again really isn't one of the considerations, there is still a tie back to this flood reduction project that the city is trying to go for. And when you work with projects like that and the engineering that goes into them, it's all a very specific calculation that has to be completely balanced for the project to work. And essentially, what you're seeing with that master concept plan is balance. You're seeing the balance with, mainly with the stormwater components that were reviewed by the city's consultants that were hired by the city to do the, to do analysis just like this. So any change to that, I don't want to say would outright upset the balance, but essentially you'd have to start the process all over again because of the detailed calculations that go into projects such as the stormwater improvement. So it had less to do with whether or not they can get more lots and more to do with whether or not this was the design that could work best in the opinion of the consultants that were hired to help improve the stormwater system.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's late, so I'll be brief. So ditto what Mike just said, I will not repeat it. But it seems like a win-win. Think about it. We get the land where we can convey the water. We don't get overbuilding. To get a community that can work together with such a qualified company is amazing. Baron Collier is following the city's hired surveyor, conveyor of where and how the water works, and it's going to solve additional areas, Paradise Road, Cockle Shell. I mean, it is, I don't, I don't know. Somebody show me the downside. Even deviation seven, which I've been over a number of times, it almost sounds like it's beautiful, fine, and functional. Really? And I know that I hated when Cordova was developed where I lived. I was so, oh, it was just so sad. And now it is gorgeous, it is beautiful, the landscaping is just abundant, it's Florida, and we have an extra exit. So I tell you, change sometimes is resistance, but I can't see anything on the downside of this project for the city, for the citizens. I think everybody's price value will go up, honestly. And it's the only way we can get the FEMA money. I mean, it just is like a work, work, win-win situation. Sorry, that's me, done.
Yes, Fred.
I have two quick questions, and then I'll have more to say when we get, close the hearing off. The fence that goes around ponds, can that be waived administratively by you guys or does it have to come back here?
No, in the way it's written in the code right now is it's an administrative decision at the staff level.
That's what I was looking for. Second thing is, the traffic count needs to be done in the high season. We don't want one of these things where the traffic engineer goes out in August and then puts a multiplier on it to estimate what it is in the high season because that doesn't work. I'm assuming that is the way it's going to be, correct?
Yeah, they would commit to that, and actually, we're still working out the length of time that we want the monitoring to occur. It would obviously cover a season.
Yeah, a high season.
Sure.
Good, okay. I have some other questions before we vote, one of which some will be directed to our esteemed legal counsel.
Charlie, wait.
I'm giving you a warning.
Mark? Is this, are these, remember, this is questions for staff at the
Is this, are these, remember, this is questions for staff at this point. You still have the public comment period. Then you'll have a rebuttal period from either staff or the applicant, so.
Do you have a question for staff there, Mike?
Yeah, I also had a question about deviation 2 with the fences around the ponds. So it's not a definite that they're going to have fences around the ponds?
They don't want them. But what we're saying is typically, that's something that's reviewed at the development order stage and not the zoning stage. So.
If the slopes are fine and safety-wise, it's okay. I would think that it'd be better not to have the fences, because if you're trying to give them a nice water view, the fence is going to look horrible, so.
Sure.
Okay, now what?
At this time, if there's no more questions, I would open it up to public comment.
Public comment.
Each member will have, each member of the public who should speak on this item. Again, let me know if you haven't been sworn. Actually, I'm going to, I'm going to give Matt, I'm going to ask him this. I'm going to swear him in real quick, just so he can confirm what he already stated on the record previously, which is that their plan conforms with. He swore, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth.
I do.
There you go. All right. Can you, now can you confirm what you stated earlier?
Yes, I'll confirm that the slide that was shown comported with, with what our consultant has designed.
Okay. All right. With that, I would, I would recommend opening it up to the public. Every member will have four minutes.
Public comment. Come on up. There we go. Hi.
Hi. Hi, hi. All right. My name's Julia Baxter from 10241 Maddox Lane. You've seen me before. I have to comment on the win-win situation, or the comment that was made. It's only a win-win if the presumption of what's going to happen to the property is going to be a combination of development and water management. Okay? And I'm questioning that presumption. My presumption is you're not going to win if you really like open spaces, if you like parkland, legacy trees, wildlife, places that you don't see very often anymore. I drive through Benita Springs, and I wonder where the parks are. Okay? So that's what we're going to lose, is open spaces that could be recreational as well as the water management. So everything you've heard up until now is all about the presumption of development and water management, management together. I want to remind you that there is a potential, I don't know how good a potential, that this property could be purchased. I believe the city has an application out to Lee County program called Conservation 2020. Baron Collier knows about it. There is some agreement of what would happen if they approved purchasing that property. I believe that that is the best solution. What I've heard today, and you've heard too, is this, the presentation of Baron Collier of how they struggled with all the land that is required for this water management. How are they going to do their job well? How are the, is the water management going to be done well? When I look at the plan, water management's all water, and then there's all housing. There's absolutely no open space. Even when Mike was talking about open space and how they could juggle maybe a swale here and a swale there to add up and come up with the amount of open space they needed, you know, they're still struggling to get there. So I ask you, I ask you as a council, please give it a chance. Give it a chance. You have a proposal out there. I believe they're going to evaluate the property. That's Conservation 2020. I also believe that the FEMA funding would actually be more likely to happen if it's not in combination with development. In other words, they'd feel like, you know, presenting funds if it's for the conservation and flood control versus something to do with development. So that's about all I want to say.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So good evening, everyone. My name's Paul Sheldon. I live in the Benita Lakes community, which is contiguous to the North Parcel. So thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. I have with me a petition that I showed you before of 240 of the 268 homes in Benita Lakes with various oppositions to this proposed community, a new community on the North Parcel. I'm going to specifically talk about Deviation 7. That is the biggest pain point for our community. So for a point of clarification, Benita Lakes' property line has a 35 to 75-foot preserve. Now, what is proposed is beyond that preserve, instead of the 50-foot, which is in the ordinance approved by three of you and signed it in December of 2019. So that's just 26 months ago. The ordinance approved a 50-foot buffer zone, and now, of course, there's a consideration to change that. I understand that. But we are opposed to approving that deviation. We do not want to have that, that buffer zone trimmed down from the 50 feet that's in the ordinance to the 15 feet. Noise, view, dirt, property values. So I would encourage you very much, the dialogue and the Benita Springs City website has all the videos of some of this team of when you approved the ordinance and all the positives of a buffer zone of 50 feet. And now, on the table is to trim it down and use this preserve, which is Benita Lakes' property line. That is Benita Lakes' property. We maintain the preserve today, this buffer zone of, call it, 50 feet. And the developer wants to use that over again. Next is, just because the developer showed us on the screen and said, Benita Lakes, there was no, there was an invite to Benita Lakes, and we didn't partake in it. True. What was not said, I put a lengthy note out to the planner, okay? November 22. When did the answer come? 51 days later, January 10, 5:00 p.m. How can I, as a representative of 268 homes, respond to anything with only 24 hours to go before the zoning hearing? So I have my answers. I wrote, I wrote them to them, and I received them 51 days later, 24 hours before the zoning hearing for me to review. So I, there was no need for me to meet with them. That's why. So that's the half you haven't heard. Now you heard it. Lastly, I don't know who the proposed builder is going to be, but some food for thought, because we're putting the back of this onto Benita Lakes and others if we request a shrinking of the 50-foot. We're saw, the water issues that are being solved is on the back of our, our neighborhood and others. And I don't think it's right. Business levels with builders, Pulte. Thank goodness, they reported their quarter-four profit margins yesterday, and they're booming. Return on equity, full year, 28% for Pulte. This is just one builder. I don't know who the builder is. Okay? Year-end, Pulte, $1.8 billion cash flow in hand. Quarter-four, home sale revenues, 38% up, $4.2 billion in revenue. And lastly, home sale gross margins, 26.8%, an increase of 880 basis points. So please consider this when you're talking about putting on our back as a community the water solutions by shrinking the, the buffer zones. You all, 26 months ago, approved 50 feet. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
William Clark, 10301 and 10361 Wood Ibis Ave. Everything that I've taken and done on the review of the proposal put forth, I used the March 13, 1980 stormwater permit. And every one of those blue tabs comes back to being an issue that relates back to Deviation 7, 11, and 14. There's all kinds of comments in here about the grading levels. There's in here about who's going to maintain what. There is a part that the city should have maintained, the city didn't, that Mucelli would take care of, he didn't. It's in here that the future owners will take care of. For the developer to come in and say that whether they didn't know or they don't want to, they want to take care of what they have, there's all kinds of requirements already in here that if you want to come back and redo the permit, you have to address those particular issues. You want to start talking about the 50-foot down to 25-foot, you're taking what is now a five-foot-deep drainage swale and replace it with a 48-inch pipe. You're going to take everything and put it into a pipe and have a discharge point. So you have to change or impede the ES permit. You're taking, and all over the country, we're daylighting streams. We're taking things out of pipes and letting them run naturally. We're doing the opposite. It degrades the water quality. You now have a point discharge. We're trying to remove those around the country. You have a plan submittal that the only place that I found a topo map in that plan submittal was in the, the Sieg Hoffen Report. That's the only place you're going to find those. You have a, two plans in there that say USGS quads. They're smoked out, and you see where the development will be. We have, there was a comment made that there'll be a one-story limit on certain portions of the property. Well, Wood Ibis is all one-story homes along the golf course. That's not in this plan. When the, when the, when the planner made the comment about unutilized, underutilized depends on your personal viewpoint. I think if you ask the people in this particular area if they feel it's an underutilized property, no. I think there's a lot of uses for it. I think your density calculations are going to wind up changing once you take and you put in your lakes. The density calculations are on 113 acres. Now, if the city has to go and buy X amount of land, you just changed your density numbers. Your comment about, you know, this is a win-win, you do realize that the city is going to have to pay to buy those large blue areas that were on that plan on page 19. As for the constraints component, I know that when the developer says they felt constrained, they've been working with Siegoffen right along. When you find the plan and you follow what those plans are, it's on top of the Siegoffen plan. It's on their plan. That's the only one that you see for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ed Shinowskis. I live in Pelican Landings. I'm a concerned citizen, chemist by trade, member of the Clues Waterkeeper. I want to thank you guys for doing what you're doing. Glad it's you and not me. The, my opinion is that you don't really have enough information to make a good decision, a good quality decision on, on what's before you tonight, and you do need some additional information. The Siegoffen Plan does a real good job at managing volumes of stormwater. It collects it, stores it in ponds, discharges it into Spring Creek. If stormwater ponds were an acceptable way to treat nutrients, southwest Florida would probably have the cleanest water in the state. Unfortunately, Lee County, 43% of all water bodies in Lee County are impaired, meaning they're polluted to some level. And in the last three years, we've seen a 36% increase in the number of impaired water bodies in Lee County, primarily due to nutrient pollution. So when I stand here, it's hard for me to say that simply building more stormwater ponds to hold water is an appropriate solution for reducing nutrients. It's not going to happen. The Siegoffe Plan basically treats Spring Creek as, as a conveyance system, as a, as a drainage ditch to get rid of the water, when in fact, Spring Creek is a freshwater tributary into Astero Bay. It's a key delivery of fresh water to Astero Bay, which is an outstanding Florida waterway and the state's first aquatic preserve. The state gives a special designation of an outstanding Florida waterway to, to special waters that give them the highest legal protection allowed by law. And it doesn't allow, it allows no discharge into, into an outstanding Florida waterway that negatively impacts the water quality of those waterways. Spring Creek also happens to be an outstanding Florida waterway, and it deserves that same level of protection. And I don't see that here in this plan. So I ask you to take all this in consideration when you're making your decision. I think this is a very unique piece of property with a north-south flow. It's a key piece of the Spring Creek watershed. You have an opportunity to, to use that land for the benefit of Spring Creek and the water quality. And again, I don't see that in this plan, so I hope you make the right decision going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Piero, 24731 Carnoustie Court on the east side. And I emailed each of you on Monday, and I emailed my neighbors as well. And I just want that email to go on the record, expressing our concerns. Regarding the upcoming vote on the deviations requested by Baron Collier Companies, we want to stress to each of you who will vote on behalf of the citizens of Benita Springs, that while Baron Collier Companies may have been cooperative in their negotiations with city staff to date, city council has absolutely no obligation to grant the requested deviations without careful consideration. We ask that each of you, as our elected officials, review prior to the February 2 meeting, the golf course redevelopment regulations, which were passed only a few years ago. These regulations explicitly describe in Section 4-231 intent, the city's responsibility to protect existing homeowners. Included is the wording, "to ensure the quality of life in the community and mitigate negative impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods." Section 4-2311, General Provision A cites the following. "All development shall be in accordance with the requirements of the City of Benita Springs Land Development Code. Should a conflict arise between requirements contained in the aforementioned ordinances, the most restrictive requirements shall prevail." The existing golf course conversion redevelopment regulations consist of three pages. Baron Collier Companies knew of the existing constraints when the land was purchased, but they chose to proceed on the assumption that deviations would likely be granted. We respectfully ask that each of you personally review this document prior to voting. Deviation 7, if approved, will seriously impact the quality of life of the adjacent homeowners, and perhaps more importantly, will have a negative impact on property values. In addition, approval of Deviation 7 will allow Baron Collier Companies to fill in a thriving, healthy lake, destroying a natural habitat that has existed for decades and obliterate the existing views enjoyed by adjacent landowners. Now is not the time to simply rely on staff recommendations. Now is the time to make an informed decision to defend and support the citizens of Benita Springs as you were elected to do. Please do not allow Deviation 7 to be approved. We need each of you to step up and protect the rights and the property values of the existing homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Dwight Estman, Paradise Acres. And I will be brief. It's late. I'm tired. You are tired. Thank, I sent an email around to several of you. Thank you for those of you who responded. Thank you for those of you who responded. Baron Collier actually answered some of the questions tonight, and I want to repeat, they are a great company with a great reputation. I do want to point out that if you approve these deviations, this is your last chance. You don't get to vote on this anymore. Several of the deviations are talking about the need for land for stormwater management. Tonight, we learned that there's going to be about 53.6 acres for stormwater. We don't know how much rainfall Baron Collier is required to handle, and we don't know how much more they are going to handle in this plan. We don't know how much land the city's going to buy from them or at what price we're going to pay for it. Do we know if the city is going to be responsible for maintaining all these lakes and all these pipes? If the rainfall exceeds the design limit, will more pollution flow into Spring Creek than currently would? Has Sigehoffen taken into account that there's hundreds of homesites in San Carlos Estates at the end of Divot Drive and on Paradise Acres that still have homes to be built, a lot of them with septic systems? What are the elevation of the new homes going to be in comparison to the existing homes? I've been told that even if you had the answers to some of these questions, you wouldn't be allowed to deny the deviations, but that's a question for Derek. If you vote to approve these deviations, you have set a precedent. Basically, a developer can come before you, say, "We're going to do all this for stormwater. We're going to clean up water quality." If they convince the staff that it's okay, they don't have to provide you with the details. That's the precedent you're setting. So I'm asking you to consider, to vote for a continuance, to find out the answers before we move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dwight.
I'm Brad Seifers. I live on Divot Drive. So first off, I would like to encourage and urge you to consider the conservation 2020 purchase. I want you to aggressively pursue that. That would be the best option. I think we all agree that that would be the best solution to this. That aside, one of the things that Mr. Waters presented about the flow out of our neighborhood, out of the Gulf Villas area, showed that he has a drainage pipe leading up to our border, but nothing being done inside of our current development. Matt, I've talked to Matt Feeny about this, that that pipe has collapsed. Basically, the drainage from our lake along Wood Ibis, behind Wood Ibis, out to that point is not functional. So my question is, is that going to be fixed? Matt, I don't know if you can answer that or not. Who's going to fix it? When's it going to be fixed? We are not a homeowner association. We don't have an association there. There's no financial infrastructure for us to pay for that. I can't go around and knock on people's doors and say, "Can you pay for the storm drainage problem?" It has to be something the city has to do for us. So I would like to know if anybody can answer how that's going to be resolved. I don't know if you can answer that now, Matt, or not, but...
You can't answer that now.
No? Okay. All right. But anyway, that's my biggest concern, is that that needs to be fixed because that's the cause of the flooding problem for that whole neighborhood, is that collapse right there. So please address that aggressively, yeah? Thank you.
I'm Michelle Hermanson from 10231 Maddox Lane. I'm also an elected official in the fastest-growing county in Wisconsin, just across the border from Minneapolis-St. Paul. I'm currently up for reelection to my fourth term of office. You have in your board packet, ready for your signatures, a new zoning ordinance that approves the rezone and deviations. You have things ready to go forward with maximum development of 350 dwelling units on this land and ready to deviate from the criteria the staff and council had set just two years ago for this development, but you don't have to. That is what this meeting is for, and I agree with some of the previous speakers that I don't believe you have enough information to make that decision and to sign those papers tonight. You've been voted into office to ensure the quality of life in this community and protect the public health, safety, and welfare. We, as a society, have been skillfully marketed into believing that bigger is always better, and we must always approve the maximum allowable. Just because a calculation says a maximum affordable mortgage on a particular income is an $800,000 mortgage doesn't mean it's a good idea. That calculation didn't incorporate all the unknown variables that a pandemic brought, for example. In the same manner, just because all of our experts are telling us about a 25-year storm and a 100-year storm, we are experiencing weather patterns across the world that have not been seen before, and we really don't know what a 25-year storm or a 100-year storm is anymore. Or what happens when a car crash or a broken water main occurs in front of the only entrance that is now smaller to a development, and a 12-year-old inside that development has a ruptured appendix or a brain aneurysm that needs an ambulance now? Four years ago, I had a life-threatening accident. I spent 15 days in a Level One trauma center. I had four surgeries, and I was non-weight-bearing for seven months. I am very grateful that my home was in a place where all the emergency services worked well. I know firsthand how critical that is. You are not obligated to approve deviations that allow building to maximum capacity. It is American marketing that starts at 500 homes and goes to 350 that makes 350 look good. There is nothing wrong with less density than maximum. You have one opportunity tonight, an opportunity that you'll never get again, to do this right. Once we go too far, build too much, destroy too much, we can't get it back. Is development the right and only alternative for that golf course? After this development, Baron Collier Company will be on to the next development, but we'll still be here. Benita Springs will still be here. What do we want it to be? A place where citizens can live together well in an ever-changing natural environment? Or a place with serious mistakes that the next generation will be trying to fix with no resources left to fix them? You've been elected to office to ensure the quality of life in the community and protect the public health, safety, and welfare. This and the land resources of Benita Springs are in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Barbara Ogle, 24981 Carnoustie Court. I'm on the east side of Carnoustie Court. I did meet with Austin and Nick last Wednesday. I did show them the back of our house. You asked how many houses, maybe had a 10-foot setback. Our house, the property line, you have a picture of what the property line is, the second photograph that you have. The first one, both of them with that white float, that is 25 feet. That's what 25 feet will be with a wall from my backyard. So again, the ordinances were passed in 2019 to allow for development of golf courses, but the rules were put in place to protect both the developer and the residents. And at this point in time, I am asking that you continue to hold to that 50-foot setback. They mentioned squeezing the balloon. Well, they've squeezed the balloon, and it's popped out on Carnoustie Court. You look at those slides that they've provided, and yes, there's going to be tons of lake, and the majority of the residents will have lake view, but we've got all of it squeezed into our street. And again, I hope that you hold to at least that 50-foot setback. It may not seem like much, but it would mean a lot for us to be able to say that the city council held the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else rebuttal?
Does the applicant need additional time to rebut?
Can we take a small break?
Sure.
Allow the applicant?
Yeah. It's nine o'clock.
At this time, Mr. Mayor?
All right.
At this time, I'd ask if the applicant and then if staff has any rebuttal to any of the public comments.
Okay, Nick.
I guess I was given a short straw to come up and talk to, even though I'm not the P E. You know, I can tell you this. I've listened to what the folks said who live in the neighborhood, and we take all of that seriously because we've got to meet with people. One thing you don't have in here tonight is a room full of 150 people because we've met with a lot of the communities that are out there. And I can tell you, when the vote for Lot 86 came around, 130 of 158 civic folks voted for that, and they listened to what we had to say. It's because of what we were doing to try and be compatible with the neighborhood. When I showed that last slide that was up there with the circles to, you know, Councilman Corumba asked that question about what's this look like with these buffers? Because you talk about 50 feet or 25 feet, and you go, "It's not atypical to see 20, 30 feet between homes and almost no buffer, but we're proposing a buffer wall and any enhancements that are there." So I think we kind of demonstrated that we've really reached out to the community, and you have a handful of people there. While they're concerned, I think a lot more people have told us that, "Wow, you guys have really kept bending over backwards, and we're excited about the lake view we're going to get." I think tonight, the challenge you face is someone's going to get a really nice lake view and someone's not. There's going to be a lot more lake than there was before, but no one is going to get a diminished buffer to the point where they're not going to be compatible with the community that's there, between walls, landscaping, and everything that we provide. The staff reviewed it, and we've talked to them many, many times about what's required and what's not required. And Mike and John did a real good job of beating us up in a way. Can you do better? Can you do, you know, enhance this? Can you increase that to six feet? We didn't have to do the park. It's not in your code. We didn't have to do the roundabout. It's not in your code. So all of the things we provided, when you look at in totality of everything that's been done, significantly enhance what's that community's going to get when we leave that area. You've had a professional engineer with over 20 years of experience, who used to be the senior water management reviewer, testify tonight, and the only one I know that's competent professional engineer, tell you that the system that's in place and plan to be in place with the conceptual design is going to meet or exceed the requirements of the South Florida Water Management District. I've had a lot of people tell me, or heard them tonight, talk about the different criteria, what you want to go for. And being a regulator for 17 years and understanding that, I've also heard that when I was sitting with these folks in front of the dais, and you always have to remind yourself, "Okay, there's things that people will ask about, but it's not within your code." And we've stayed within your code, in fact, far exceeded it. Your zoning board heard this as well, too. And I do want to apologize to Paul Sheldon because he waited 51 days internally. We all thought someone else was doing the response, and right away, someone scrambled and said, "We've got to get that out to him." But that was January 11th. We're at February 2nd. We still would have went out and met with him and tried to address some of those concerns. So we're better than that, and that's just a miscommunication on our end. Again, the Planning Commission reviewed it, the Civic Association, all the neighborhoods on the south side and on the west side of Carnoustie. A majority, I would say, of this community is thrilled that we're going to take some action with regard to the flooding. They're thrilled that there's going to be a park. They're thrilled that there's going to be a bus stop potentially and a pathway system. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback about that. Lastly, there were two items that were brought up, one from Councilman Forbes about the monitoring and maybe the landscape, and so we would offer to put this on the record as well, too. The developer its successors are assigned, shall submit an annual report to the city documenting the conditions of the stormwater system and buffers within the property it manages, and if any conditions require maintenance and repair, we'll address them with a commercially reasonable timeframe. That's attorney speak. Derek will have to kind of clean that up a little bit in the ordinance. And then that exhibit we talked about, single-family, single-story in those areas we provided, I think we talked to Mike about using that as an exhibit to the master plan to be very, very clear where we'd be, a single-story in the project. So in closing, I'd like to say, you know, we've gone way out of our way and way exceeded the code requirements for what's required for us to do. You've heard some of the folks tell you, "That doesn't matter. You should be looking at other things." Unfortunately, in the world I lived in with 17 years in the past year at Baron Collier, you're still confined to that box, even though we exceeded. And it's going to be a little bit to my detriment when you go back to the office because we put a lot more into this development than we probably realistically financially should have, you know, but we did because we thought it was the right thing to do. And when you walk away from a project, you can at least say we did the right thing, so...
And Nick, I'm impressed that you're taking the water from 170 other homes. I don't know if you knew that when you purchased this property, that you had to take in everybody else's water and handle it properly.
We knew that we'd have to take some, Mr. Mayor, but when the design came out, we didn't realize how much. It was a little bit of a, "Okay."
You're helping the whole neighborhood out.
Yes, sir.
That's my opinion.
Yes, sir. So that's the end of my prepared comments, and we can answer questions if you'd like.
I have a question. Did anybody ever think of putting a series of settling ponds along the line on the east side of Carnoustie?
You need to, sir. Sir, sir, excuse me.
Hey, hey, yeah. I'll take care of this meeting.
Yeah. At this point, the gentleman with the question would need to ask leave of the council to basically to add additional public comment.
Yeah. Come up, sir, to the microphone.
What, you want me to say it up there?
Yeah. I can't hear you back here. I'm not good hearing anyway.
I'm going to want to ask another question, too.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry with counsel.
Yeah. There seems to be a big battle over the 50-foot setback. Has anybody ever looked at the possibility of putting a series of settling ponds along that east coast, east side of Carnoustie Court, instead of having a fence and shrubbery and all that other good stuff?
I don't know what you're talking about.
I'm talking about putting small lakes there, small streams, small ponds. Instead of having the 50-foot land, you have a series of small ponds to carry the water, to filter it, and all that other good stuff that goes with it. Has anybody ever thought of that? Maybe the people that abut that land should have a say in what goes in there, rather than them telling us what they want to put in.
They own the property.
Yeah, but, no, but you have to vote on it.
There's no kind of...
Yeah, but you have to vote on it.
There's no kind of rules or regulations.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's only, but that's only one, one, one way they think of developing that area. Maybe there's another way that accommodates everybody.
Counsel.
No?
There's no obligation to go into back and forth.
We can't, we can't.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry, sir. Yes, Fred.
I'd like to ask Derek two questions. Number one, is anything we need to know that is, rises to the level that legally we can ask the applicant to ask us for a continuance? Or can we legally ask them for one?
Okay. A continuance, under your code, the applicant is entitled to a continuance as of right. The council is entitled to ask for a continuance only if there is additional information required to make a decision.
So I'm asking you your opinion. Is there?
That's not for me. That would be me replacing you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Then, next question is, is there any legal...
Fred.
I said I had more than one question. So can I ask my second question?
Yes, sir.
All right. The second question is, is there any legal reason that we could deny the zoning and the deviations requested?
I can't answer that question for you. What I will advise the council is that the applicant has a right to ask for the zoning under our rules, including the 2019 golf course redevelopment, which also authorizes the approval of deviations. The applicant has the initial burden of proving that they meet all the requirements for the rezoning criteria, which both Mr. Arnold and Mr. Fegan went through. At that point, if there is concerns, objectors from the neighborhood, other interested property owners, or staff, they have to meet at least some competent substantial evidence on the record regarding those criteria to establish a question of whether or not the council can deny the application if the initial burden's been met. So it's your job to review the testimony, both from the applicant, from the staff, and from the public, and if you feel that any of those criteria have not been met, then there would be a basis for a denial. Absent that, if there is a showing that they've met the requirements and the council agrees that they've met the requirements, then they would be entitled to an approval.
Okay. I think they've met their requirement, and I made a motion.
And if you feel that any of those criteria have not been met, then there would be a basis for a denial. Absent that, if there is a showing that they've met the requirements and the council agrees that they've met the requirements, then they would be entitled to an approval.
Okay, I bet, I think they've met their requirement and I made a motion. It's been seconded. Any more comments?
I have one more comment. Well, actually, a couple of them. Number one, the design that these people have accepted from our consultant is way, way, way above what South Florida Water Management requires, way above what we used to require. The water modeling that they have to do after they've added all design is submitted.
Call the question.
On what they've designed. So it's, we're way better off on that.
Motion to call the question.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Councilwoman Corumba?
Who's running the meeting? Who are we voting on a question?
There's a motion and a second to call the question.
Then I vote aye to call the question.
Councilwoman Purdon?
As much as I don't agree, if he still has things to say, I'm not going to cut him off, so continue. I would vote no.
Councilwoman Carr?
Yes.
Councilman Corey?
No.
Councilwoman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
No. No.
Okay, so we keep on talking.
Well, I'm going to wind it up real quickly here. So that water modeling is way better than anybody had. Secondly, the statement that we need to be going way above 100-year storms. Someone, a wise man once said, when you get more, much more than that in Benita Springs, we're going to be flooding all over the place. So we're maxed out. You can't, you just, you need to, you need to know it's art for everybody. Think about that. The other thing is, I do feel bad about areas that are not going to have a lake, but apparently there's no, no solution to it. No matter what's done, I understand clearly, the view you have won't be as good as it was before. But property owners have rights. Unfortunately, the design they have requires what they're doing. So that's all I have to say. I will vote yes for the motion.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Passes six, one.
Positive vote. Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, would you like to move directly into the next hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Next hearing is second reading and public hearing of a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs considering a request to amend the scheduled uses in the Benita Springs zoning ordinance 1902 to create a Phase 1A of approximately four plus or minus acres in size to include indoor/outdoor sports challenge complex with consumption on premises, and to add three deviations located at 10-601 Benita Beach Road and 28-191, 28-251, 28-281, 28-341 Old Floor, Old 41 Road, Benita Springs, Florida 34135, providing for an effective date.
Very good. Mike?
Good evening, Council. Mike Fegan again for the record. I'll give you a brief synopsis of this case and then I'm going to turn it over to the applicant. So this is a request to amend an existing zoning ordinance that was approved in 2019. It's the site of the old dog track. There's now the Benita Springs card room that's there on the corner of Racetrack Road and Benita Beach Road. And this is a request to take a four-acre portion of that piece next to the card room and utilize it for an indoor/outdoor sports challenge facility. And there's also going to be a proposed 10,000-square-foot building, give or take. This case was heard by the zoning board back in December. They voted seven to nothing in favor of it. There was an additional condition that they wanted staff and the applicant to try and work out, so we will need your feedback on some of those options. It has to do with the planting heights for the buffers that are visible from Benita Beach Road, but we'll, we'll cover that with the presentation. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Paula McMichael for the applicant.
Hello.
Good evening, Council. Again, my name is Paula McMichael, Vice President of Planning Services for Holmontez, for the record. I do have a presentation. I'm going to go through it pretty quickly here and then just ask for your questions. So I do have the whole project team here with me. If you, if you do have questions for our experts, we have representatives from the owner of the property, Isadora Havanek and Scott Savin, the attorney, George Powell, our architect, Thomas Jones, our civil engineer, Rick Berlansky, and our transportation expert, Ted Trish. So you already heard the request from Mr. Fegan and I'm just going to review our site plan for you. So I think everyone knows where this is located. It's four acres directly to the west of the existing poker room. So the poker room was approved back in 2019. We are utilizing the same entrances onto Racetrack Road. So all of this area here has already been constructed. So there's the poker room, there's a restaurant, this parking has been constructed, and the stormwater management has been constructed. So this is the four-acre site here for the sports challenge. And Scott does a better job of describing the sports challenge concept, but it is, you have the opportunity to bet on yourself playing sports. So we have a golf hole, there's a basketball court, this is the building. Inside the building, there is bowling alleys as well as virtual reality booths. There is a mock football field, so it's not as wide as an actual football field, and a baseball field. So again, we're using that access that already exists out to Racetrack Road. This is Benita Beach Road on this side of the screen, and maintaining that future interconnection to the west. We have some elevations of the proposed buildings. The elevations do match the existing poker room and restaurant. The architectural style is the same. There is also an outdoor bar, so that's an elevation of what that would look like. The landscape buffer, we are proposing an enhanced landscape buffer along Benita Beach Road that would match what has already been installed along the poker room. So that includes additional Royal Palms and an additional hedge row. So the first slide was at installation and this is what it would look like three years, about three years from now. The planning, the zoning board, excuse me, did recommend a condition that we install the landscaping at an additional height. And we would request that you not include that requirement. It is harder both to obtain the landscaping at that additional height, it's hard to get it that size, and it also affects the survivability of the landscaping. So it actually does better if you plant it at a smaller size. And this is Florida, everything grows very rapidly, so you can see the buffering that was put in on the north side of the poker room. Looks very attractive and that this will match that landscaping. That's just a cross-section of the landscape buffer. I'm not going to go through the deviations. We did request three deviations. Staff has recommended approval. We have agreed to all the conditions that staff put on them. We are in agreement with staff, so I would rely on the staff report regarding the zoning conditions of approval. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
There's Jesse.
I just had one. Looking at the project, when I, it would seem almost to me like you could do the inverse of how the, how the golf is done, so that the golf balls were flying in towards the buildings as opposed to out towards the road. But I don't know if that, I mean, if it won't fit that way, obviously it won't. I'm sure somebody thought of that, but I mean, it seems to me like it would make more sense that the balls would be going that way instead of out towards Benita Beach Road. It's, I mean, it's not a non, that doesn't kill it for me, but the point is, I think it would, it makes more sense that it would go the other way. But I mean, obviously, if nets and you've already figured out how high they need to be and whatnot, but could you explain that thought process?
Yes. So I'll give you the simple answer and then I'll ask our architect to come up and explain more the details of how we fit it into the site. But basically, because we're using this, this access point that already exists in maintaining that connection to the west, that sort of separates the site into two portions. So with sports fields, you have to orient them north-south, otherwise you're staring into the sun.
Right, right.
And so the way that this fit with the building, this was really the only place that that golf target challenge would fit. It doesn't actually fit to put it on the south side of that roadway.
No, okay. I mean, I figured I'd just, yeah, but if, I'd like to hear, yeah.
Hi, Thomas Jones, for the record, principal with JMDG Architecture. So a very good question. We have studied this various ways and the proposal that we have here before you today is, is one that solves several issues in efficiently locating all of the events or challenges. One of the major concerns, and you see the front elevation of the building here, is how does the organization or business facilitate the events with some reasonable level of oversight and control? So the question of the orientation of how you tee off and where does the ball fly from and to, is really a function of as a patron comes in the front door and checks in at this location, they exit out the side of the building and the tee is right there, readily available, rather than having them traverse, you know, 300 and some 400 feet to Benita Beach Road to hit the ball back. And so without getting into the details of the shot and trajectory, all that's been studied. The, the club is a limited wedge that will not allow the ball to travel high. The netting is appropriately scaled for how that ball will, will fly through the air. And so that risk mitigation has been done, so it's.
How are you going to keep the ball from going up in the air?
No, we're not going to keep it from going up in the air, but keeping it from flying higher where it can travel into Benita Beach, yeah.
I don't know, chip shop, I don't know. That's the only thing I'm concerned about.
May I have?
Yes.
Are there similar facilities other, other places?
To our knowledge and my knowledge, as a project architect, this is the first of its kind in the country.
It's only 100 feet, 100 yards? How long is this? From tee, tee to green is how long?
It's about, what is it?
130 yards.
130 yards, yeah.
130 yards. I'm not much of a golfer, but that's, that's like a five iron.
Yeah, what is it, Scott, three?
It's part three.
Part three, what iron? What, what iron?
Probably about an eight or a nine iron.
Eight or nine iron. Yeah. So as Paula mentioned, the interconnection here was a planning move that we provided to allow flexibility of how you future develop to the west. So that natural bissection of the site, which again, as you mentioned, that interconnection here goes all the way out to Racetrack Road. So that is the other developed ingress, egress of the property as it exists today further south in that parking lot. So that's a natural vehicular entrance/exit point, one that allows the patrons who go to this building specifically to easily navigate and find the building. So at that point, when you provide that natural bissection of the site, the golf course doesn't, or the golf tee, the three-par hole, if you will, does not really fit here very well. But what does efficiently fit here are the scaled-down baseball and football events, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, yes, Mike.
Yeah, I just had a question about your hours of operation and the days. Being that it's in here the way it is, if you guys wanted to change it later, is it required to come back to council again? And did you guys come up with these hours and days or was it?
Yes, we did propose those hours of operation. We are in agreement with those hours of operation. I guess I would look to staff as to.
Yes.
I would assume it would be an administrative amendment to change the hours of operation, but.
If it's, if it's a specific condition of the zoning, it would be, it would be.
It would have to come back to council.
However, as you know, this is a Phase 1A. This project's probably got multiple other phases. If at some point in the, in the future, they wish to incorporate hours change for this phase when moving forward with another phase, they could easily do that at the same time.
Now, this is going to be lit up all the time? This golf course? Going to be lit?
Only when in use.
Only when in use.
The hours of operation is that it would not be.
What are the hours of operation?
There are two different sets of.
Depends on different days.
Hours of operation. One is for the outdoor facilities and one is for the indoor facilities.
Yeah, well, when staff makes their presentation, I'd like to hear whether they recommend, you know, leaving certain hours in here or if it's something that we can open up to where if they want to adjust their hours later, it doesn't have to come back to council again.
And just to go back to what Derek was alluding to, the entire property is over 90 acres, so we, we've only have development on this, this corner of the site. So everything else, as they come in and develop the rest of the property, we will be coming back before you for approval for future development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Before, before.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Public comment. No golfers here? Come on. Okay, roll call.
Well, I'd like to hear from staff, especially about the hours.
Yeah, yeah, you did ask. Sorry, Mike. Mike is asked for Mike. Get on the mic. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mike Fegan, for the record. Do you want me to just address your question or do you want me to go through the presentation?
Summarize.
It's his question.
So to summarize your question, the code is relatively clear on what staff is able to do administratively versus what would require a public hearing. If the direction is given by council that that is an aspect of the project, that they're comfortable allowing staff to do administratively, that's fine.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to, for you guys to amend your motion to allow.
We got a motion and a second to amend the main motion.
Yes. We'll leave it to staff.
I just said, a motion to approve.
Yes, with, with what they're asking. What they're asking for, I just want to be clear, if there's no other conversation on that motion, what I, what I would recommend is taking a vote on, on Vice Mayor Gibson's motion, which is to add to your approval, the ability of staff to change the hours of operation.
Well, I got another question about that. What if, what if the council's not happy with your decision? We have no recourse?
It'd be an administrative decision at the staff level.
We could probably call our lean.
Well, I won't go along with that. First motion to approve.
Okay, so I would vote on that motion.
Councilwoman Carr?
Yes.
Wait, okay, so if we vote. This is on my motion, your second.
Okay.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor. This is, this is on the, this is on the motion to add the ability of staff to make the changes, which I believe you want to vote against.
Yeah, no, my original motion was to approve it.
Right, so what, what?
But I don't want to change that.
Okay, but the rest of the council might. That's why we're moving on that motion. So you would, you would probably want to vote nay on this amendment.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, that, that's acceptable. Someone want to make a motion then?
I'd like to make a motion that we allow staff to adjust the hours.
Second.
And approve everything else with the conditions.
Second, okay. All right. Is there any?
Can I ask for staff clarification with regards to how you want to handle the buffer on Benita Beach Road? It was the zoning board recommendation that they plant at a higher height. The applicant's justification is that when you plant at a higher height, you run the risk of the plants dying more quickly.
My opinion is we just allowed the previous applicant to go with the shorter ones because they're hard to get, the, the full-size mature ones. And if it is a viability thing, I think it would be better to go with the short, my own opinion, anyways.
I agree.
Counselwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Jay Jones?
Thank you.
Four.
All right, that moves you on to your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Counselwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Counselwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Counselwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Counselwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Counselwoman Carr?
Aye.
Any comment on the agenda items? Okay.
I have no items.
Okay. City managers?
Yes, mayor and counsel, we have provided in your packet a copy of the preliminary 20, 2020, 2021 fiscal year-end financial report. We would like to defer then, this evening, we'll present that during the presentation during our next city council meeting. I just wanted to remind everyone that we are starting our next council meeting, which is normally a day meeting, at 4:00 PM for a workshop, and we'll be having our regular council meeting at, at 5:30. Also, you recently received an email, we were able to set our redistricting public workshop, that is, that is a workshop for the public, on February 17th at 5:30. All of councils welcome to attend, but we caution that you reserve your comments for when you are seated as counsel, because that will be a voting item. And if you're not able to attend, we will be recording it as well. We won't be broadcasting live, but we'll be recording it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, mayor and counsel, city manager, mayor and counsel reports, any report?
It's late. Just want to thank our Governor DeSantis again. What a great job in so many ways, and for this nearly $17 million.
Okay.
Counselwoman Forbes has some-
Minute, Forbes?
Yeah, I need to make a, an announcement here, and it, and it may require counsel figuring something out, but Byron Donalds will be hosting, along with the Florida League of Cities, a town hall meeting where each of the city councils in his district, I think there's what, eight or nine of them roughly, they'll all be on a Zoom meeting, probably be videotaped, I don't know if it's going to be broadcast live or not, but be videoed so each city council could put it on their website. Now, this is not my doing, that's their doing, and I, but I understand why. You can only have a meeting like that so long. Only one city council person will be on the Zoom meeting for each city council. We need to pick somebody tonight that would be that, because it's going to be held on the 16th at 10 o'clock in the morning, so there-
You volunteer for that, Fred?
Well, I'll do it if they want, but Mike might also want to do it. He'd be a per, now, one thing, I think whoever does it should do, we, you, all of you should come up with questions, concerns you have that you want to be brought to his attention. Now, obviously, if you give 10 of them, and there's nine cities, you're not going to get through all 10, so the next thing, after we get them collected by email, then somebody, you can prioritize, and then the ones that get the most votes or something will have to do it within what's legal, and Derek will help keep, keep us on track. So everybody be thinking about, for example, one thing that I know is a big question mark with everybody is FEMA flood insurance, because it's going to go up, so that, that should be one of our concerns. But anyway, so it can be Mike, it could be me, whatever you want.
I volunteer, Fred.
You volunteer, okay.
And I just want to clarify on that, we're not, it's not sure yet if it's going to be recorded, live, or available on websites.
Right.
There's only going to be one council person.
One council person per chain, per, per chamber.
City or whatever.
Yep, and then there'll be a meeting, the questions on, you know, the agenda, the questions, the participants, I, we still have messaging to the Florida League of Cities federal person, so they haven't responded, so we don't necessarily agree to put everything out there yet, but we agree to meet with each council, one person from each.
Yeah, one person, I was worried about the, the sunshine law.
It is up to, it's strictly up to Byron Donalds' staff and him to decide whether it'll be recorded, whether anything will go beyond just that Zoom meeting.
Okay, Mike, you're, do you need a vote for Mike?
Or, or for Fred? I volunteered Fred.
Oh, you volunteered, Fred?
Yeah. I mean, I, I'll do it if you guys all want me to.
Do you accept, do you accept that, Fred?
I'll do it, I just, I'm, makes, whatever, everybody's-
Yeah, vote, everybody's for Fred? Okay, hey, Fred, thank you. It's yours ball game.
I'll put an email out through Debbie on the requests for concern questions and all that, and then I'll get with Derek how we get them prioritized.
Hey, Jesse, you got it, and Mike?
Yeah, I just want to say, I was at the Downtown Alliance meeting the other night, and it's, the Town and Town Alliance is growing, there's a lot, a lot of new members, and also, you know, they're doing a great job, and that, the Shangri-La has started opening their restaurant. It was a soft, soft opening, so you kind of watch for hours and days there, but the food, the food is very good, though.
Very good, yeah.
Oh, and also, I did, also, I just wanted to say happy birthday to my son, Michael. It's his 16th birthday.
Hey, Michael.
Happy birthday, Michael. Wow.
Okay, Amy, anything else you done?
I've done two things, but I'm, we'll talk about it next time.
Okay. Laura?
I'm good, sir, thank you.
You're good, Mike, Eric? Chris?
I'm good.
About approval minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Vote.
Counselwoman Corey?
Aye.
Counselwoman Gibson?